Guten Morgen, guten Morgen, Molweni. Können wir versuchen, zu starten und für den nationalen Antrag zu standen?
(Musik)
Vielen Dank. Zuerst möchte ich mich für das entschuldigen, dass wir ein wenig zu spät angefangen haben, von dem Zeitpunkt her.
Als unsere Anfangszeit, die uns begannen?
Die Gründe, weshalb ich mich entschuldige, ist, weil es einige, die zu spät gekommen sind, aber auch, dass es einige, die natürlich nicht wegen ihrer eigenen Wahl zu spät gekommen sind.
Die Ursache für meine Verschuldung ist, dass so viele Menschen früher geführt haben, und andere nicht, weil sie viel zu lange waren.
Also mussten wir wenigstens einen größeren Anteil dieser Menschen erlauben, die registriert wurden, um dort zu sein.
Deswegen muss es Verpflichtung geben, für die, was noch beschäftigt ist, um zu registrieren, und die zu lange, um dort zu kommen.
Zuerst möchte ich sagen, wir sind ein Komitee.
Erstens möchte ich Ihnen sagen, dass wir ein Komitee sind.
Der National Assembly.
Wir sind ein Komitee der nationalen Verhältnisse.
Der Parlament der Südafrika.
Wir sind ein Teil des Parlaments der Afrika.
Wir haben zwei Hauses, die Parlament bestehen, das ist der National Assembly und der National Council of Provinces.
Das sind zwei Hauses, die Parlament hat, das ist die nationale Verhältnisse, und dann die nationale Rat von Provinzen oder NRFP.
Nur wenn diese zwei zusammen sind, werden sie als Parlament genannt.
Nur wenn diese zwei Hauses zusammen sind, werden sie als Parlament genannt.
Der Komitee der National Assembly oder Parlament, das ist hier, ist der Komitee für Mineralressourcen und Energie.
Der Komitee, der von den nationalen Verhältnissen ist, ist der Komitee für Mineral, Holbrone und Energie.
Das ist das, an dem der Department of Mineral Resources and Energy reports.
Das ist der Komitee, an dem der Department of Mineral, Holbrone und Energie beschlossen wird.
Also sind wir nicht der Department of Mineral Resources and Energy.
Deswegen will ich es nicht ausdrücken, wir sind nicht der Department of Mineral, Holbrone und Energie.
Der Team, der ist hier, auf meiner links, wir haben den Honorable Maylem.
Und auf meiner längeren Seite ist der Honorable Malhe.
Nach ihm haben wir den Honorable Madokwe.
Langsam ist der Honorable Madokwe.
Nach dem Honorable Madokwe haben wir den Honorable, er hat zwei Titel: Honorable Professor Sima. Es ist nicht sein Name, Professor ist eine Qualifikation.
Dann ist es der Honorable Prof.
Nach dem Honorable. Nach dem Honorable Professor Sima ist der Honorable Kula.
Langsam ist der Honorable Prof. Kula.
Nach mir ist der Honorable Malhawle.
Langsam ist der Honorable Malhawle.
Nach mir, auf meiner rechten Seite, ist der Honorable Zungula.
Auf meiner rechten Seite ist der Honorable Zungula.
Nach dem Honorable Zungula ist der Honorable Malinga.
Dann ist der Honorable Malinga.
Nach dem Honorable Malinga ist der Honorable Volmarans.
Langsam ist der Honorable Volmarans.
Dann der letzte ist der Honorable Bilankolo.
Und dann ist der letzte der Honorable Bilankolo.
Ich bin Mr. Lucito.
Ich bin Herr Lucito.
Der Chef des Portfolio Committee on Mineral Resources and Energy.
Ich bin der Vorstand für den Komitee für Mineral, Holbrone und Energie.
Ich weiß, ich hatte dies.
Ich habe dies erwarten.
Es ist eines der kältesten Stellen im Winter und eines der heißesten, wenn es Sommer ist.
Hier ist ein der kältesten Stellen im Winter und wahrscheinlich warm in der Sommer.
Aber Sie werden mit uns bleiben.
Sie bleiben nicht sicher.
Wir müssen unser Bestes tun, um uns gegenseitig zu schützen.
Wir werden unser Bestes tun, um uns gegen die anderen zu schützen.
Und die COVID-Protokolle.
Und die COVID-Protokolle.
Ich kann nicht sagen, wir müssen sozial distanzieren, wenn es heiß ist, ist es nicht einfach, sich näher zu kommen zu jemandem.
Ich weiß, es ist nicht möglich, wenn es warm ist, wenn jemand kommt.
Aber lassen wir unsere Maske auf.
Wir werden unsere Maske auf.
Wir machen es, vielleicht haben Sie dieses tödliche Virus nicht. Aber jemand, nächster zu Ihnen, könnte es haben und deshalb stellt es Risiko für Sie.
Ich mache auch nicht Ihre deutliche Virus, meine Verschuldung, ich mache auch die Risiken.
Wie ich sagte, ich weiß, es ist sehr heiß hier, aber Sie könnten suffociert sein, aber ich denke, es ist besser, dass Sie suffocieren, als dass wir hier nach einer anderen Geschichte nach dieser Konvergenz von vielen von uns hier.
Ich weiß, es ist schwierig mit der Maske, und man fühlt sich oft wie jemand verschmerzt, aber es ist besser, als was alternativer Nachfolger könnte sein.
Jetzt, nachdem ich es gesagt habe, und die Gründe, weshalb ich erklären muss, dass wir nicht der Department of Mineral Resources sind.
Und die Ursache, warum ich Ihnen verdeutlichen möchte, warum wir nicht der Department for Mineral, Holbrone ist.
In Sachen Richtlinien des Parlaments, wenn der Department ein neues Gesetz introduziert oder eine Änderung der Gesetze vorschlägt, senden sie das dem Speaker des Parlaments, dann wird der Speaker des Parlaments diese Gesetze oder diese vorgeschlagenen Änderungen zur relevanten Komitee, an dem das Department liegt.
Wir müssen Sie richtig sagen, wenn es eine neue Weizungswerk oder Weisigungsweizung wurde gesteuert, wurde der Department einem Speaker, und wurde dann verweist auf den Komitee.
Der Komitee wird zwei Optionen haben. Die erste Option ist, mit diesen Änderungen oder Gesetzen zu handeln und sie zurück zu den Speaker zu referieren, und dann wird der Speaker diese Vorschläge des Komitees zur National Council of Provinces referieren, wenn die Regeln so sagen.
Das sind zwei Optionen. Die erste ist, dass der Komitee die Weisigungs- oder Weizungswerk und Fall in Anbefehl machen, den Rückkehr zum Speaker des Parlaments, wo dann wieder herrlich wird, an die nationale Komitee, provinciale Komitee.
Option zwei der Regeln ist, dass der Komitee, bevor, nicht wann, bevor er deliberiert auf die vorgeschlagenen neuen Gesetze oder Änderungen zu einem existierenden Gesetz kann, das Bill nehmen und es zu dem referieren, was wir jetzt tun, was öffentliche Beratung ist, um die Meinungen der Menschen zu hören, die von den vorgeschlagenen Änderungen oder neuen Gesetzen beeinflusst werden können.
Dann ist die zweite Option für den Komitee, vor der Tür, Besprechung des Weizungswerks oder der vorgestellten Weizungswerk oder Weisigungsweizung, dass es nach öffentlichem Genommen wird, für openbare Teilnahme, um zu hören von Belange, was auch geraucht wird, der vorgestellte Weizungswerk. Und danach wird es Beratungen geben, über die Verdacht, was verschämt ist.
Also hat der Komitee entschieden, die zweite Option zu nehmen.
Der Komitee hat das Entscheid, um die zweite Option zu wählen.
Um und den Bill zur Verfügung zu stellen, zu den Menschen, die von den Vorschlägen beeinflusst werden können.
Um diese Weizungswerk zu bringen, und zu verweisen auf Menschen, was auch geraucht wird, der vorgestellte Weisigungs.
Also als Komitee, haben wir noch nicht darauf deliberiert.
So, also, als Komitee, hat uns noch nicht eine Beratung gemacht, über diese Weizung.
Es gibt keinen einzigen Mitglied, der Fragen auf dem Bill antworten kann.
Es gibt keine einzige Person, die Antwort kann geben, auf Fragen, die diese Weizung.
Sonst können wir standen und finden, dass wir alle nicht in Einigkeit darüber sind, wie wir die Frage behandeln.
Anders können wir auch sagen, dass wir nicht können, um weiter zu arbeiten, mit dieser Weizung.
Also, wenn wir mit dem Prozess der öffentlichen Beratung fertig sind, werden wir nur an diesem Punkt, wenn wir als Komitee deliberativ unsere eigenen Meinungen auf das, was in den vorgeschlagenen Änderungen enthalten ist.
Wenn uns dann die offene Verwirrung abgeschnitten ist, wird uns der Komitee, dann kann unsere Meinung liegen, über was uns sehen, und wo diese vorgestellte Weizung.
Also für jetzt sind die Änderungen, Änderungen, vorgestellte Weisigungs, was gemacht ist, durch den Department, und nicht den Komitee.
Unwahrscheinlich gibt es etwas, das die Trennung der Kräfte nennt. Unglücklich ist es, da etwas genommen, die Verteilung von Macht.
Dann können Sie nicht die Exekutive und die Gesetzgebung mixen. Wir können nicht sagen, wir wollen hören, und dann bringen wir den Department. Der Department sollte das selbst machen, ohne mit einem Komitee des Parlaments zu gehen.
Da ist der Wiedergeber, und dann wird die Ausführerin gesorgt, und diese können nicht übereinnehmen, das muss apart gehalten werden, und der Department muss seine eigenen Aktien ausführen, das kann nicht von der Ausführerin gekommen, um den Komitee zu sagen, was zu tun.
Also in anderen Stellen, wo wir waren, wurden uns gefragt, was in dem Bill ist, und wir sagten, wir können Ihnen nur eine Antwort geben, wenn der Komitee die Empfehlungen getragen hat. Für jetzt kommen Sie zu hören.
Uns ist allgefragt, wo die Weizung, was beinhaltet, uns kann nicht antworten. Uns ist hier, um zu leisten, wenn uns all die Einsätze bekommen, wird uns Beratungen geben, und dann antworten und Anbefehl machen.
Alle Prozesse, die hier stattfinden, sind in jeder möglichen Form geregelt, inklusive Noten per Hand.
Diese Verrichtungen werden genehmigt, in allen möglichen Formen, da ist selbst Rekord selbst geschrieben, damit wir das amtlich können nehmen.
Also, wenn wir fertig sind, werden wir die Berichte in alle Bereiche, die wir besucht haben, kombinieren und dem Komitee präsentieren. Der Komitee deliberativ überprüft, überprüft die Berichte, und dann beginnt er, auf die Inhalte des Bills zu deliberieren, informiert von dem, was in dem Bill enthalten ist.
Wenn wir klar sind mit der Verwirrung, wird all diese Verdacht, was genehmigt ist, zusammengefasst werden, für den Komitee, um Beratungen zu geben, und dann wird der Komitee Anbefehl machen, und die Verschlachtung kann anfangen, und dann weiter in die Kamera, die Weisigungs oder die vorgestellten Weisigungs.
Also erkläre ich das, damit wir Ihr Werk viel einfacher machen, dass wenn Sie sprechen, wir wollen nur hören, was Sie über die Vorschläge, die in dem Bill enthalten sind, sagen.
Ich verdeutle, dass es für Sie leichter ist, um Ihnen zu verrichten, um für uns zu sagen, was Ihre Meinung ist, über die vorgestellten Weisigungs und diese Weizung.
Sie haben Recht, in Wirklichkeit erwarten wir Sie, dass Sie die vorgeschlagenen Änderungen rejecten können. Sie können auch stimmen und überprüfen, ob Sie recht haben.
Ich will Ihnen sagen, das ist Ihr Recht, und wir erwarten von Ihnen, um Ihr Recht auszuführen, um gemeinsam mit dieser Weizung, und um den Tendenz in Ihren Kanten auszudrücken.
Sie haben auch die Rechte, zu sagen, ich stimme den Vorschlägen auf dem Bill, except one, two, and three, dass wenn es korrekt sein kann, so zu sagen, one, two, and three, dann wäre ich viel mehr komfortabler, oder wir rejectieren dieses Bill, dieses vorgeschlagene Änderung, nur wenn sie ein, zwei, drei können, dann werde ich in der Situation, ich stimme ihnen, für jetzt, in dem Format, ist, ich rejectiere oder ich akzeptiere die Vorschläge. Also das ist, das ist, was wir von Ihnen erwarten, also Sie sind frei, sich zu expressen, was in dem Bill enthalten ist.
Sie ist frei, um Ihre Meinung auszugeben, über diese Weizung, und auch zu nennen, dass Sie vielleicht die Weizung anfangen, außer zukünftig vorgestellte Weisigungs, vielleicht nur ein, zwei, drei, und auch den, über den vorgestellt, dass Sie den standen, außer als ein, zwei, drei verändert wird, dann wird es anfangen, damit wir können nach diesen spezifischen Items und das sprechen.
Letztendlich auf dem Bill, auf den Prozessen, ist, dass, weil einige sagen, du registrierst, als ob du in Einigkeit bist, nein. Du registrierst, damit auf den Rekorden, dass du Teil der Meeting bist. Es ist schlimmer, wenn du sprechen willst, weil du sprechen kannst, aber du darfst nicht auf den Rekorden zu zeigen, das heißt, wir werden deine Input haben müssen, weil du auf den Rekorden nicht reflektiert bist.
Ich will es nicht auch Ihnen ausdrücken, dass um zu registrieren, bedeutet nicht, dass Sie ein Stimmen für die Weizung oder so nicht. Blöd, die Registrierung ist blöd, dass, wenn Sie wirklich eine Gelegenheit wollen, um zu sprechen, dass ihr Name gereflektiert wird auf der Register, soll es nicht geregelt werden, und eine Gelegenheit bekommen, um zu sprechen, soll die Einsätze ausgewiesen werden, aus dem Rekord, weil es nicht Rekord ist, dass Sie dem wertig war.
Also, der Zweck der Registrierung ist für Rekordzwecke, damit, wenn wir Berichte geben, es sehen kann, dass es wirklich Leute in der Meeting waren. Ich bin sicher, einige von uns wissen die Erfahrung, wo Leute sagen können, sie haben teilgenommen, es gab eine Meeting, und nur zu finden, dass es keinen Teilgenommenen gibt, aber öffentliche Gelder wurden für solche Fälle nutzbar. Also ist es für Rekordzweckzwecke, nur.
Deswegen will ich es wieder ausdrücken, dass der Dauer der Register in der Registrierung ist, für uns Rekordhau-Duellende, damit wir nicht auch nicht verkehrt gebraucht werden, dass wir Rekord haben, von wie vielen Menschen beigeführt, und dass die Gelder auch gepasst ist.
Wir haben unser Bestes geübt, Sie sind frei, sich zu expressen, in ein Sprichwort, das Sie mit komfortabel sind.
Uns hat vorher gemacht, so gut es kann, oder durch die Besten von uns vermehrt, für Sie, um sich selbst ein Tal auszudrücken, was Sie gemütlich mögen.
Sie können Englisch sprechen. Sie können englisch sprechen.
Sie können englisch sprechen, Sie können Kola sprechen.
Sie können Afrika sprechen.
Sie können Afrika sprechen, Sie sind willkommen, Afrika zu sprechen.
Unwahrscheinlich kann ich gut Afrika sprechen.
Ich kann glücklich nicht so lecker Afrika sprechen.
Ich kann es nicht hören. Afrika zu sprechen, ist ein Problem.
Ich kann Afrika sehr gut hören, aber es ist ein Problem, es zu sprechen.
Also, ich will mit Afrika nicht komfortabel sein, weil ich endlich die Menschen belügen kann, dass ich etwas Gutes nehme.
Ich weiß auch nicht, so gemütlich, um Afrika zu sprechen, ich mache auch Menschen in die Gesichter mit, was ich sage.
Einfach ein kurzes Zusammenfass, über das, was vom Department vorgeschlagen ist, auf dem Bill, nicht vom Komitee, vom Department auf dem Bill.
Ich finde, was vorgestellt wird, in dieser Weizung, der Department.
Wir sind hier für die Änderung, für die vorgeschlagenen Änderungen des Department auf dem Gas Act von 2001.
Wir sind hier für die Weisigungsweizung, von der Gasweiz von 2001.
Der Gas Act von 2001, der Department sagt, es fehlt die meisten der Dinge, die aktuell bestehen.
Der Department fühlt, dass die heutige Gasweiz und war zukünftige Koordination auf zukünftige Aktivitäten, die es findet.
Eines davon sagt, dass, wie das Gas Act von 2001, über Schubserien und Sanktionen für Menschen, die nicht den Regulierungen entsprechen, nichts gibt, was Typ von Sanktionen kann von dem Department getan werden.
Eine von den Items ist zum Beispiel, dass, wenn es Sanktionen oder Putts ist, für Menschen, die nicht die Vorworte von der Weizung nachkommen, sieht es nicht speziell, was der Typ Sanktionen in Plak gestellt kann.
Also vorgibt es, dass eine Person, die nicht entsprechen muss, oder nicht entsprechen muss, das Handelner kann ein Minimum von 2 Millionen Rents pro Tag befreien.
Deswegen ist es vorstellbar, dass es schon etwas, was nicht die vorgestellten Ordnungen nachkommen, ein Putt von 2 Millionen Rand pro Tag aufgelegt wird.
Der andere Vorschlag ist, dass der Minister oder der Regulator die Lizenz herstellen kann.
Der andere Vorstellung ist, dass der Minister oder der Regisseur die Lizenz mag rufen.
Weiter vorgibt es, dass, wegen der neuen Technologien, die da sind, der Gas Act von 2001, die neuen Technologien, die aktuell bestehen, nicht in die neue Technologie einschließen.
Die darf, darf alle fühlen, dass die Gasweiz von 2001 nicht die neuen Technologien, die von da gebraucht werden, einschalten, und dass es auch eingeschlagen wird, in die Weizung.
Weiter vorgibt es, dass in den vorgeschlagenen Änderungen, dass der Department durch diese Änderung, wird er Verantwortung tragen, um zu sicherzustellen, dass Arbeiter im Arbeitsplatz geschützt sind, das Umfeld geschützt ist, und Gemeinschaften geschützt.
Weiter stellt der Department vor, dass diese vorgestellten Weisigungs, da vorher gemacht wird, für den Department, um Verantwortung zu tragen, dass es Schutz für Arbeitnehmer gibt, dass die Umgebung geschützt wird.
Weiter vorgibt es, dass mehr Kräfte dem Minister und dem Regulator gegeben werden, um irgendwelche Aktionen zu tun, wo es Verletzung ist, die an der Komplanz konzentriert ist.
Dann stellt die Weizung auch vor, dass der Minister und der Regisseur mehr Macht müssen erhalten, um dort zu treten, wenn es Auswirkungen von Regulierungen gibt, damit die Aktien genehmigt werden, die in diesen Übertreibungen.
Weiter spricht es für die Notwendigkeit, zu sicherzustellen, dass es ein breites blattökonomisches Parlament gibt.
Weiter handelt es, dass es mehr Gelegenheit muss geben, für schwarze ökonomische Bemerkungen.
Es suggeriert auch, bitte, es sind nicht wir, ich versuche, Ihnen zu verdeutlichen, welche Dinge in dem Bill enthalten sind. Es suggeriert auch, dass, wenn es öffentliches Interesse an dem Gas Handel gibt, der Department aufgrund des Handelns die Lande expropriert.
Weiter stellt es vor, dass es Belange oder gemeindeskapplische Belange wäre, in Gas, dass der Department und der Minister die Rechts haben, um die Eigentum zu enteilen. Dies ist nicht uns, dies ist ein Vorstellung von der Department, ich will es nicht deutlich machen.
Es suggeriert auch, dass durch diese vorgeschlagenen Änderungen, sie encouraged Kooperation zwischen dem Privat- und dem öffentlichen Sektor in der Gasindustrie.
Damit will die Weizung auch gemeinsame Arbeit zwischen dem privaten und öffentlichen Sektor und der Gasindustrie fördern.
Also, es sind nur einige dieser Themen, die enthalten sind, nicht, ich habe nicht gesagt, alle. Ich bin sicher, als Sie durchgegangen sind oder durchgegangen sind, haben Sie Ihre eigenen, die Sie als Vorschläge identifizieren, in dem Gas Act von 2001.
Dies ist nicht einige von den vorgestellten Weisigungs, in dieser Weizung, von der Gasweiz von 2001, dies ist nicht alles, was ich genannt habe. Ich habe es auch gesehen, so sieht diese Dokumente, da noch Items sind, was auch für Sie ausstammt, was Ihnen gehört.
Dann werden wir fragen, wie Sie diese Chancen sehen, sie sollten in einer Reihe sein, aber ich kann sehen, sie sind vermisst, aber es ist okay.
Hier in der Mitte ist ein Reichstühler, was Sie sehen.
Bitte, wir müssen auch fair sein, wenn Sie nach Ihnen kommen, mit der Zeit. Wenn wir sagen, wir rufen Nummer eins, Nummer eins wird auf der ersten Schere sitzen.
Wie ist die erste?
Nummer zwei. Nummer zwei wird auf der zweiten Schere sitzen. Nummer drei, bis auf die letzte Schere, sie zeigen mir, wie viele dieser Chancen sind, damit wir nicht jemanden haben, der stand, weil es keine Schere gibt. Wir geben, wenn die andere Reihe fertig ist, kommen wir wieder für die zweite Reihe. In dem Fall, in dem Fall, wenn wir keine andere Hand haben, geben wir immer noch einer Person, die für die zweite Zeit will, einen neuen Hand. Also bedeutet das nicht, wenn Sie gesprochen haben, Sie sprechen nicht wieder, aber es wird Thema, wir geben immer Priorität auf einen neuen Hand. We will always give preference on a new hand. But if the new hands no longer eh are no longer raised up, then we will give that person a second chance because we want everyone where possible to speak.
Zo ons zal geleendheid geven voor mensen om aan de op te steek en naar die middel toe te bewegen. Spreker nummer één zal op die eerste stoel zitten, twee op die tweede stoel en zo voort. Onze tien stulen en eh ons zal geleendheid geven voor een nieuwe spreker alke keer, zou daar nie meer handen wie is van mensen wat wil praten nie en iemand heeft nou de geleendheid gehad om te praten, ons heet ook nog een beetje tijd over. Zal ons wel daar een persoon weer geleendheid geven om te praten. Maar dit hangt af of ons genoeg tijd heet en of daar nie meer nieuwe sprekers is nie.
So feel free, come and express your views.
Voel eens het blijf vrij om uw opinies te komen uitleggen.
Maybe you will even be not, you will be educating us, but at the same time you will be empowering us on certain things that we may not be capable to take no the fact that you are a member of parliament or you, it doesn't mean you are clever.
I mag ons ook van nieuwe inlichting bewust maken, is ons ook graag iets niet leer. Om een lid van die parlement te zijn betekent niet onze slim en ons weet alles nie. Darum verwelkom ons i in zitten.
It just means you were lucky, you were privileged enough that in your name when people were asked they raised their hands and when they liked it they can still lower their hands and you'll come back and sit there like all of us.
Zo dit betekent wanneer i geleendheid krijgt, is i gelukkig en i zal spreken weer krijgen en klaar praat en terug gaan naar je se plek toe en dan is alles allemaal weer diezelfde.
So even us as members of parliament, we don't possess natural wisdom.
Ons is hier van die parlement beskikkelijk waar na die rekervijsscheid nie.
I hope I've tried to explain eh eh because I don't want to come back again and say no, no, no. You are asking the question on the bill to us, we are not responsible for the amendment. Until we recommend, we will stand by our recommendations. For now, you are free to express your opinion. Can we then get the first hand?
Ik hoop dat dit nou voor i duidelijk is dat i hier geleendheid heet om uw opinie te leggen en niet voor ons fraa te fraan, iemand ons al eerst kan fraa beantwoord wanneer ons andere feelingen maakt.
This is the first hand, number one here.
Hier staat nummer één.
Eh number two, the cap black.
Nummer twee meriut.
Number three, the black jacket. Number four.
Nummer drie.
Number five. Just go to chair number five.
Voel eens het blijft net naar se plek nummer vijf.
Number six.
Nummer zes.
The white shirt, number seven.
Nummer schierven.
Now, I will request that every time, every time the one in front of you, like now, the one who's on the podium was number one.
Axel, voor schuip.
So you just come through the chairs. When number two is coming in, number three must take the seat where number, 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 number two is sitting.
Ik wil graag voor schuip, dat zei i praat en die spreker zei.
Is there any other hands?
Voorent is al skyf. Is daar nog handen?
Eh... Number eight, nee?
Nummer acht.
Eh? Oh, number six?
Oh, jammer, nummer zes.
Okay, it's number six.
Nummer zes.
Eh, number seven.
Nummer schierven.
Number eight.
Nummer acht.
There with a white eh head.
Daar achter meriweet.
Was the number eight?
Nummer acht.
Eh? Which one? Which one? Which one? Eh, I thought your hand was up.
What?
Was your hand not up?
Was je hand nie ook nie?
Ja, that's why we can make it ten there.
Ja, is nummer tien, goed.
Let's try if possible five minutes eh so allow others after you.
Om ons proberen het bepaard tot vijf minuten per spreken weer?
You can start say.
I mag beginnen met je?
Eh, bij je dankje.
Thank you very much.
Eh, voor die geleendheid.
Voor de opportunity?
Sorry, I forgot, you are allowed when you are on the mic to take the mask off.
Oh, okay.
We are doing it for two reasons. One, the mask feel free, after you will be sanitized, before you it was sanitized.
Goed, i kan vrij voor om mijn masker te verwijderen als je bij die microfoon staat, dit wordt geschoen gemaakt voor en na alke spreker.
In as much as next to you, you will see there is someone who's doing sign language.
Langs is, zal i zien dat iemand wat gebarental talk?
But we have been educated that people who listen or who watch sign language, they also want to read from your mouth what you are saying.
Maar mensen wat van gebarental gebruikt maakt, wil ook graag een persoon zijn mond zien zodat hij kan lippen liest.
So we allow people who live on sign language to read even from you what you say.
Zodat hij in gebarental i lippen kan liest en te weten wat hij zegt.
You can continue.
I mag voor het gaan.
Ja, eh bij je dankje voor die geleendheid.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Eh wat gecan wordt.
Voel eens het blijf van ze enormen van?
Ja, ik kom bij dit eh.
I'm getting to that.
Eh... Eh, mijn naam is Christian Delange.
My name is Christian Delange.
Ik is van Willowmoor.
I am from Willowmoor.
Eh, een lid van die gemeenschap.
I'm a member of the community.
En ik is bij je dankbaar om eh je te kan wie is. Eh... Zodat ik mezelf mijn gevoelens kan eh eh weer spelen naar eele toe.
I'm very glad and thankful to be here so that I can share with you my views and feelings.
Eh, ik word je ch-cheeperson. Ik zie eele's in drie gedeel. Okay, ik zie eh 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 ik zie eele's in drie gedeel.
I see you have been split into three.
Ja, departments.
There's three departments.
Eh, eele's van parliament of?
One is from parliament.
Eh minerals.
One is from minerals.
Ik wil het graag weet bij i, als i praat van department. Eh 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 van wat er department praat i.
When you are talking about the department, which department are you referring to?
Can ik net een werkere of dat assembly?
May I just have an indication on that, please?
No, I can answer that eh because it's directed, no, I never talked about departments. I said there are two houses of parliament.
Ik het niet.
Is is the National Assembly, is the National Council of Provinces.
Ik het niet gepraat van departementen wat drie is nie, daar is twee huizen. Dat is die nationale vergadering en dan die nationale raad van provinces.
The proposed amendments are from the Department of Mineral Resources. That has got a minister, there is no minister here. So the department is not part of the committees of parliament. It's a department headed by a minister and the director general.
Na die wijzigings wat voorgesteld wordt komt van die departement van mineralen holbrunnen. Daar die departement heet een minister. Hier die commiteer is geskijf van die departement. Hier is nie minister.
So we are a committee, not a department.
Ons is een commiteer, nie de departement nie.
Eh bij je dankje, cheeperson.
Thank you very much, che.
Che, ik zie in hier die document eh wat ik hi voor mij heet.
Cheeperson, in this document I have before me.
Eh tweëiden en een, wet aachenveertig.
This is act?
Aachenveertig.
Forty eight, forty eight of two thousand and one.
Yeah. Eh, als je praat van die wetzondwerp, wat eh according hier die document, zei goedgekeer in tweëiden en twee.
When you are talking about this bill, it has been approved in two thousand and two.
Ja.
Yes.
Eh, ik wil graag weet bij die commiteer. En eh eh ik wil he die commiteer, moet ons allemaal eerlijk wie is.
I want to ask the committee something and I would like them to be very honest with us.
Eh, eele komt nou naar ons toe voor inza.
You are coming to us for inputs.
Zo eele wil nou he ons moet aan eele is of een rijde weg hier, of ons kan zeg nie voor wat i aan ons voorbouw wordt nou net.
So you would like us to approve or say yes or decline and say no to what you have been, what you have proposed to us now?
Dan wil ik bij i weet en bij die commiteer. Ons als gemeenschap en leiers wat die zit en zo voort. Wat ever ons aan i nou zal voorbehoef. Zal het de inza brengen? Want dat is, als ik denk, i werd het ik al gezien dat die die celles zaak was either bij die of of zo. Oor die angeleendheid wat i nou samen met ons bespreek is.
So what I would like to know from from the committee is that when we are giving our inputs and saying yes or no to the bill, would this actually have any weight, would this mean anything?
Dan mijn laatste vraag aan i.
Then my last question to you.
Gaan eele die proposal wat hij gemaakt wordt hier ons?
Would would you take the proposals that we are delivering to you?
Zal hier die inza van hier die gemeenschap ineen ineenstens eh uitwerking zal heet op parliament, één, twee, op hier die commiteer eh 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 van eele gaan dit was nou eh verwijst naar die volgende afdelings van hier die eh wetzondwerp. Zo ik wil bij eele weet ineenstens wat ons hij zal voorbehoef aan eele. Zal het ineenstens help ons of is het maar net dat eele wil weten wat is ons een view, één, twee eh eh gaan alle leester aan ons hier ik kan. Bij je dankje.
So what I would like to know from you as a as a committee is that the the inputs we are giving here, will this actually be of any help to us as a community, would this help us at all? Or is this mainly to gather information to take further to the next steps? Thank you very much.
Goeiemoor, alma ben en ja is.
Good, I would like to say good morning to everyone here.
Ik is Johannes van Royen, ik is van Willowmoor.
I'm Johannes van Royen, I'm from Willowmoor.
Ik is op pas eh ik werk voor een klein biu, klein vierboer, ons is een gemeenschap en ik doe een omgevingszaak binnen die omgeving van Willowmoor. Waar ik recycling doen om ik om ik eh dan is het schoon te ons omgeving.
Eh, my work includes eh the nature conservation, a bit of nature conservation in Willowmoor and and area.
Eh, de reden hoe kom ik hier is ik volledig verre de met die wetzondwerp wat nou twintig, eenentwintig aan ons gegeven eh goedgekeer is, is gevolgd van.
The reason why I am here today is I am not happy with the eh with the bill, the two twenty twenty-four bill.
Twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one bill.
Wat over niet ver niet moet worden. Eh, de reden hoe kom ik het zozei is eh ons een klein vierboer, ons kreeg bij je soort. Of dieren.
The reason why I'm not happy with this bill is we as small farmers, we really battling.
Ons betal, eh wat ons de grootste betal is is water en die gas komt onder de grond uit.
Our biggest problem or challenge is water and as you know, the gas will be coming from under the the ground.
Yeah. Eh, zo voor mij is het bij je onder verder, als ik kan samenstem met die bill. Wat long goed goedgekeer wordt, had voor ons gemeenschappen dit handle voor ons nie.
I feel it will be very unfair if I agree to this bill and if I approve eh eh on on behalf also of the community.
Wat ik gezien het twintigveertien.
I saw in twenty fourteen, the following.
Ik was in Witbank.
I was in Witbank.
Ik heb gezien wat maakt die speenkoel mijn. Hoe brandt het onder on die grond?
There at Witbank, I saw the impact of the coal mines and how it was burning and the impact of that on the ground, under us.
Dat wil voor mij zeggen. Die gas wat onder de grond uitkomt, gaat voor onze cellem pik hier, als wat die koel mijn wat ik gezien het in Johannesberg en Witbank. Want als op een lek plaatsvindt, dan gaat onze yille aarde opgeskierd worden, is gevolgd van.
That tells me based on my previous experience and what I saw in Witbank is that the same is going to happen. When gas is going to be exploited, it is going to have a very negative impact on the environment.
Waar alles ons in die karoo is, is bij je droe en is een schoon lachende omgeving. Onze, bij je van ons mensen in die karoo, is bij je gezond, gaan in Johannesberg toe, was daar, het is gezien hoe lijkt die mensen, verkrank en sieer enige iets is gevolgd van die stofen en die gasse wat daar ons staan.
Here in the karoo where we find ourselves, this is a beautiful environment, a beautiful area, it's clean and we, I feel that we are healthy and we are people who are living a healthy life, not like those in places like Gauteng, in Witbank where eh the impact of things like these where where eh pollution are causing health problems.
Ik het ang, ik is reeds bij een freaking, freaking programma wat ik die goed geleerd, ik het ondervinden en zien, ik het gezien als je twee klippen van die kabatje in elkaar, wat ze vier vonke heet en dat veroorzaakt vier voren. Die yille land kan aan die brand raken, dit wat is anderland er reeds gebeur.
I've seen before, say for instance, an example to eh take eh taking two stones and you hit it the one against the other, the the effect of that, it can cause fires and that can again have very negative impact on the environment.
Voor mijn laatste wil ik net bij je graag graag voor die gemeenschappen, ook kan voor het zeggen dit is onze kinders wat in de indel van die dag daaronder gaat lijn want ons gaan dood en onze kinders raak groet en jouw seiken moet ook nog groter raken in die wereld zodat is die yille wereld verskiert, die yille land.
Lastly, what I would like to say to the community is remember what the effect of our decisions here will be because we've got to take into account the future of our children. We we will pass on, but we've got to think what are we leaving behind for our children?
Bij je dankje.
I thank you.
Maris Burzel.
Greetings.
Eh, ik am angu Mukabe.
I'm Mukabe.
Is zei namen gu Vanda.
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 Yes. Eh, dit is oké Jansenville.
I'm from Jansenville.
Eh, dit is ook al kalalaba, somma business, abannging.
From the smaller eh eh business people.
Eh, man kan lego submiten che. I... It is a machine in terms of what is being proposed, the current situation and what is being proposed by the bill. Eh... Currently, the current situation, and he understand I can clear, it's two-folded.
The way I understand it is two-folded.
In a bandu dat are licensed to trade the gas.
It has people who are licensed to trade with gas.
In de iben a bandu dat are trading with gas without license.
And also have people who are trading with gas without license.
Eh unfortunately, ababa trader you without license. Unessa, there's nothing that they can do in terms of the current situation if they understand I can. Now, now in the in the checker, the other side that is saying what the bill seeks to change. Is dat machine hier 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 am de?
This is my. This is my.
The bill submission. Abba get documented now, the problems from the department.
In that document I have.
It's only talking about the safety of the people in the industry. It's proposing that, if I may read it. Yeah. It compares the government to hold industry accountable. It provides the state with sufficient measures to ensure that the industry combines with the various environmental health, safety obligations placed upon in the law. It doesn't talk about license. So the submission, it may be lab, it parlepa, so that we can, si lungi se lendo, the license can.
That's what I submit, we should rectify the issue of the license.
Eh, man Kobe.
Let me proceed.
Now, from those that already have the license to trade, clean, clean, clean industry. I don't know what happened, but because I understand when you apply for a license, you get all the the regulations in terms of how you need to operate, but the the current situation, I deny. Understanding from your presentation, Mister Chair, that there's new technology now, things needs to be changed. Now. And we look, okay. Eh, now, it is not clear in terms of sanctions, should the license see not comply with regulation, but what the bill seeks to change. Now, ille, ille in denze die die boos. I know it's a proposal from the department, but I need to understand the the proposed penalty per day, it's 2 million reals. Now the question is, who are we talking to? Why am I asking that question? Simply because, from your presentation, Mister Chair, and from what I've read here, there's a key word that you are talking about or that is coming up, that is affected area. Now, in in my understanding, the affected area, that's why you're here in this area, is our area. So when we're talking about a proposed penalty or sanction, 2 million rand, on what level of a license are we talking about? Sambaru yen? Sambaru.
Are we together?
So, the bill, or whoever proposed the 2 million rand, I think I can break it down, so that sieso understand that. Because to me, understanding, ja, the mere fact that you're saying 2 million rand per day, should you not combine, uh, 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 should um, um, oshe, automatisch al, is valle langa part, boosja so ik is.
It closes outside because it's scaring us.
Now, ben ik kan geen share namtsanje, since we're in engagement last week, eh, Janssenville, ben ik kan geen namtsanje share in de wana? When you do your presentation or your opening, firstly, when you doing introduction, you will say, this is Mister so and so eh, from this, or represent this portfolio, so that we understand who you're talking about. Then there's the one about who share. And I'm coming from a business side. My interest on this whole thing, how is it going to affect um, in terms of business, that money? So the focus I may pa. Now.
My focus is on making money.
Now, here, I'm I'm participating in terms of making sure that the bill is amended. My last, my last concern, sorry question, it's a concern, that after this process has been done, I feel honored to be part of this process, but after the process has been done, we are not given a chance as public to monitor if the bill is imple- i- 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 eh, eh, if the bill implementure correctly. I don't wanna feel like I'm being used for a bill to be passed. So, di nestre elektro wana.
So I have a request.
When the bill has been passed by, has been signed by the, by, by, by the president, because the reason why you are, you are here, it was this gas in this area. I know that. And Goku, si pre si si, si business bill, not the business side of the gas.
Now we are busy with the bill.
So, I'm proposing that when the actual work is coming, we also be engaged. Thank you.
Can I start? Let me welcome the panel. I'm Tracy Plakis. I'm residing in Witleven, Bayesno Dier, Janssenville. I'm here to submit our submissions as the EFF in Bayesno Dier. We like the commission, uh, the panel to note that in the current form, the EFF reject the bill, but also take note that we agree with section 26, um, where it makes supervision for small businesses also to be get trained. So our, our admissions is at follow, is follow. And in the current situation, current bill, the state, we up, we submit that the state must own at least 60%. Because in the current form, the minister got too much powers. We also submit that there must be built new colleges and T vets so that our people can be trained locally to produce this technology. We also propose that there must be established a sovereign fund to benefit our communities in the at least five years to wit service delivery. We also submit that companies must be open and transparent to the communities. For example, where there is gas leaks, where our community is gonna be in danger, so everything must be transparent. Thank you.
Good morning, Mister Chairman. Um, my name is Gary Vion. I'm representing the DA today, but also in my own personal capacity, having gone through the Act. And I found a couple of points that I'm not happy with, but I would like to bring you to the point of page six on the Act, paragraph 55. And this section deals with section 2E, which amends the target group from historically disadvantaged South Africans to black people only. Now, I'm sure that if you look around our community today, you will see that our community is made up of a number of different cultures, different people, different language groups. But not only that, as a disabled person myself, this cuts out all disabled people. The old Equity Acts brought in ladies, disabled people. According to this, this cuts out everybody and this act will only deal with the BBBEE. Now that, first of all, I think is totally unconstitutional. The second point that I've got here is that the section also refers to gas sector specific requirements. But nowhere in this act does it stipulate what these specific requirements are. And that brings a, a big question mark to me. Because why is this not specified? We need to know exactly what this means. We cannot accept a bill where there are question marks because this can be changed around, it can be played around with, and it can be moved around any way we like, once this has been accepted. So my question first of all is what are we going to do about the BBBEE? Because as I say, all of these people sitting here are representing different culture groups. Myself as a disabled person, how do I deal with this? Because I've been cut out and dis- disbarred from this act. And then secondly, we need specifications on this act, not just a pie in the sky. Thank you.
Goeidei, I'm Ricardo Smith, eh, from the DA, Democratic Alliance. Section 28 in the bill provides that the energy regulator may expropriate land for the purpose of gas exploration and that the procedures to be followed are as prescribed by the minister. And section 25 of the Constitution, expropriation of property is an extremely contentious issue and the expropriation bill is currently under discussion in parliament. The procedures and requirements associated with with this process are complex and it is concerning that this amendment bill is a walk on this issue. It would be better practice if this section stated that should NERSA need to expropriate land for the purpose of gas-related activities, that it should make a application to the Minister of Public Works and Infrastructure in order for their department to facilitate expropriation on behalf of the energy regulator. I therefore do not support the amendment to this bill. Thank you.
Meneer die voorsitter, goeiemiddag, omor.
Mister chairperson, good morning.
Kain twas. Kain twas, I'm greeting you in koi koi.
I'm, I'm greeting you in koi.
And I'd like to say, it's late now, I'm speaker number six, a little bit down yes. I'm speaker number six, I don't want to keep you long, but I just want to say, in the ancient language of this country, in the place of King Haikon Noah or Insa, and in the place of the great David Stierman, I would like to say, geratore pare du. Yeah, I welcome you in the koi koi guvap, the first language of this country. Now, I don't want to say a lo- a lot of stuff, I, I wrote a lot of questions here, nee? But I want to start after I have welcomed you now in the Tamdebo. We know we are in Bayesno Dier as a municipality, but the geographical area is the Tamdebo where King Haikon Noah lived, 25 kilometers north of Eberdi. So you Eberdieners, you are part of us. In any case, that's for another day. Now, Mister Chair, I just want to say this, thank you very much for the parliament coming here. It's nice to see the golden, uh, what do you call it? Motives, nee? And a lot of you that are here, I count, you may be a team of 30 to 40 in the house. So that is great. But I'd like to say, this mustn't be the last time that the parliament come here. You see, I will say this. I have received invitation to this meeting by Joey Dirling, by Zelda, and I also contribute or say this Wusle Jacobs, the ward manager, he also invited me to this meeting. That's why I'm here as the authoritative chief of this area. There's, there are other chiefs, but this is the authoritative chief because this is Inqua country. Yeah, this is Inqua country, of which Sukwini and Korwa are our grandchildren, okay? Okay, that's for another day. But I just want to say, Mister Chair, now you say we must, you, you just uh, give a, a short introduction of the issues that you want to discuss, nee? But I don't want to criticize you. The provincial parliament and other departments, they come here in this same hall and then they start nee, to introduce what they will come and do here with a computer, with a screen on the wall. Somebody have said he is disabled, I'm disabled too now, ik is jyldemalge, disabled.
I'm completely disabled.
Yeah, because I don't have the information of the bill. Ne, I, I've, I've got the information when I was coming in here and that is jyldemalme, the disabledness, ik kan niet dieren nieuw nie.
I've only received the information when I walked in here. This is completely disabling to me.
You, you see, you, you, you traveled from Cape Town in the airplane, maybe in the grand car that uh, combis that passed me this morning on the way. But that is a lot of money to make me disabled. I don't want to criticize, but I think when you come again, put the thing up and go through it point by point, so that I can follow and then make some notes. Nou wil ik, nou, net klaar, ik, ik het bij om de same, ik kan niet zo bij je zeggen.
I'll get to, to the last point that I want to make, I've got a lot to say, but I'll, I'll start ending off.
And ik konstetisifanilant, nee? Stan, environment. Everyone has the right to an environment that is not harmful to their health or well-being and to have the environment protected for the benefit of the present and future generations through reasonable legislation and other measures that prevent pollution and ecological degradation, promote conservation and secure ecological sustainable development and use of natural resources while promoting justifiable economic and social development.
This was an excerpt from the Constitution.
Nou, ik denk wat Eile hier komt doen is om onze een koop te krijgen in die beerzige.
So I think what you are trying to do here is get us to buy into this whole business.
En nou, het ie ook voor mij gesen, dat ie is een komiteer van die parlement.
And you've also told me that you are a committee of this parliament.
En ie is die voorsitter.
And you are the chairperson.
Nou, wanneer ie die voorsitter is, nee? Wil ik graag weet, kijk ons daar bij je gekomen, een zettige leveren die je celles haal, maar daar kom niks van.
So you are the chairperson and I want to know that we've had many meetings where committees come here and we give our inputs, but nothing happens, there's nothing that comes from the matter.
Ee het bijvoorbeeld gesen dat die departement is aan op, ze, je, en eerste komiteer en julle praat misschien later met mekaar. Maar ik zal zeg, die departement moet eerste hier gewezen, dan die komiteer om die reden, die departement. hier geweest, dan die commitee om die reden, die departement kreeg mos nu die inlichting, bring the inlichting naar i to, dan kan hij die inlichting fijn kam en prioritiseer, maar nou een lettertaal is opgedaag, nou geeft het voor mij een probleem.
So you say that there's the committee and there's the department, and the two will meet later on to discuss. But I think the department should have been here first, the department should have been the ones to go through the bill with us, gather the inputs, and bring it to you, so that the committee can go through it with a fine-tooth comb and make decisions.
Ek wil is slecht, dan goed en mensen so kom pas het.
I don't want to plant bad ideas in people's minds.
Maar ek lijs en ek leester, nou net nou die dag toe selle, want julle praten nieuw van fracking in die documentie, maar gas, fracking het doen met gas.
So I read and I listen, and this document doesn't really relate to fracking, but fracking is related to gas.
Hij is die voorzitter van die commitee, hij moet daar sozé voor die minister waar die wuf is van die departement, minister Guedemantash.
You are the chairperson of this committee, but I want to say to the minister, Mr. Guedemantashi.
To ek nou die dag zien, nee, Shell kiest zeven twintig miljoen rand voor die government.
I saw Shell.
To won er ek nou vat gaan koepelen nou fracking rechter.
When I saw that Shell gave the government twenty-seven million rand, I was really wondering have they purchased the fracking rights?
En ik mean, dit staan die duidelijk in die wet, maar ik mean als ons nog goed keer aan loop is, mos nou die pad, en ons kan innige iets doen in die land, en nou die ander dag toe zien ek ook, a lang die wilderkis, en ek se voor aai mensen waar die wilderkis, "Amaandla."
I saw the people in the Wild Coast, and I said to those people, "Amaandla." Because if we accept this, it's going to go together.
Al het was sel weggedrive, want julle kom met julle groot seismografische machine, ek had gezien hoe vlug, hoe vlug die vissen en die walvissen voor aai seismografische, seismografische trillings, ja, that's the word, trillings.
So I saw how they drove Shell out, because when Shell got there with their seismographic machines and what they were doing, the actual vibrations were driving the ocean life away.
Zo ons moet definitief, kijk, julle wil ook wet of ek die bill ondersteen en of ek nie die bill ondersteen.
So you want to know whether I support or don't agree with the bill?
Ek gaan op die stadium zijn nie, ek kan niet samengaan, want die bill moet met die mensen bespreken, want ek het nou zo gevindig kijk in die wegaar, nee, ek zien community workers van die municipality so, ja, posso haas het in, dat is al een goede in, nee, zij was bija goed aai kun, ek het haar angetst, maar moe nie waar nie.
I saw members of the community here, people.
Community workers, daar is nog van julle, Fred en, daar aan de kind, julle is amali, en julle is raasleder ook so.
People working for the community.
Zo, ek zou denk, als ons een succes van die ding maak, wat ek lokale ik het de vrede voel, ek zal die wet ondersteen, dan moet ons die wet voor een lage heta, dan julle moet naar die gemeenschap het oog gaan het, en die wet met die mensen bespreken.
So I would think that if you want to make this bill a success, it should have been given to these community workers, where they can go to the community and discuss this bill and the proposals of this bill with the community, and we can gather their information and insights and present it to you.
Zo, ek denk dat, ek stop nou daarbij.
I'll leave it at that.
Maar ek hoop dat die definitief nou zal ageneem als die wuf van die commitee in die parlement, ek bed, ons is trots als die parlement bij mekaar kom, maar als je trots als je afgebraan wordt, word julle.
I would really like that you as the chairperson of this committee would really pay attention to this, and we are very happy when the parliament comes here, but we're not happy when it burns down.
Hij moet daarie, ik mean, julle praat, julle praat, hij moet naar intelligence portfolio commitee praat, julle moet nou reerag beetje opstaan, julle kan niet zo, ik mean, julle een voudige man brand die parlement, ylda mati nie groot, ah ah.
You need to, you need to talk to the intelligence committee, I mean, how can a simple man from the street burn the whole parliament down? No, that's not right.
Zo, maar dit kom van consultatie.
And this is what becomes from concentration.
Hij moet hier niet ing voor die mensen, gelat het met ons kom bespreken, ons geen ons inzette, dan kom hij, en zal hij nou wier, hoe dat die gaf da, die van die vloer af, op die wet praat.
You need to give this bill to the community workers so they can come and talk to us and we can give our inputs, and then you will hear how we have our inputs from the floor.
Zo, bija dankie, dat julle gekomit.
Thank you very much for coming.
Maar voor die punten waarde geroeped kan ik die wet voor dag ondersteen nie.
But based on the items I've listed, I cannot support the bill today.
And I say, en kosikakulu, and I say diabonga, and ek se, kind ganggangs, en my koi koi, kind ganggangs means bija dankie.
And I would like to thank you, and it means thank you very much in my koi koi language.
Koi koi san kwa, koi koi san kwa, koi koi san kwa.
Thank you very much.
Uh, gooja mohre, ek is Joey Dearling.
Good morning, I'm Joey Dearling.
Ja, ek is van die organisatie, Kejim.
I'm from the organisation Kejim.
Karwe Environmental Justice Movement.
A Karwe Environmental Justice Movement.
Ons is geheel en algere kant in die bill, ons kan niet samen die bill gaan nie, as gefolg van die volgende redes.
We are completely, totally opposed to this bill and because of the following reasons.
Die Karwe is een waterscaarsgebied, ons kan niet fracking en gas ongingen aan die Karwe toelaat nie.
The Karwe, as you know, is a water-scarce environment, and therefore we cannot allow fracking or gas exploitation.
Sorry, sorry, please, can we give him an ear? The conversing is too high, can we listen to him also?
Onze die eerste droogte in honderd en veertig jaar, ons zit de waterprobleem in Grafrinet in omgeving.
We've had the worst drought for the past hundred and forty years, and.
Hundred and forty years.
Hundred and forty years, and it's been the worst drought ever, and there is a huge scarce city of water in Grafrinet.
We say no to extractive privatization and of renewable energy, profit over people, capitalism, racism, and patriarchy. We want a South Africa without fracking, we want a world without fracking, we want a life without fracking, we want fracking criminalized, we want system change, not climate change. Ek net er die government moet gaan, en dinnela begin met gas ongingen, om te gaan naar die noordkap toe, daar is groot solar energy plants.
I would like the government, if they are planning on going ahead with gas exploitation, I want them to go to the northern Cape.
Ons kan net zien die mensen trek voordeel, die gemeenschap trek voordeel uit renewable energy uit.
The community there in the northern Cape, the solar power systems, the community are benefiting by that.
Die gemeenschap moet voordeel trek in eenge project uit.
The community has to benefit by any kind of this exercise.
Maar in die geval gaan die politici's en julle families, julle gaan paat van.
But in this case, it will only be the politicians and their families that will benefit by this.
We said no to the bill, that's my, that is stampen van mijn organisatie.
That is, that is the view of my organization.
I thank you.
I thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I greet you all in the most and the high name, which Rasta used to name, King Rastafari. When I say ja, you say Rastafari, ja! Thank you. Yes, also thankful to be here, to greet the honorables, it's also a great honor to see and to meet them. We usually saw you over the TVs and stuff like that, that's the only way we can see you from, but the exciting part is to see you literally live. Yes, that means that it is giving us a hope that you are not invisible at least. Yeah. Firstly, I'm Zondile Elias Moses, I'm originally born at Ebedi, I'm staying at Grafrinet due to circumstances. As we know that the drought is taking high risks in creation, so I'd like to go straight to the point first. This bill is not acceptable in the society of the universal movement of Rastafari, of which I am the priest of, and I'm the chairperson of the squatter camps right here in Grafrinet. So this bill is not acceptable, because it's of short notice, also as the followers have mentioned, so there's no thorough time for the people to get through this. And yes, our concern, as the Rasta's, it is the restoration of our heritage, and our heritage, it is the nature. And as we have never been granted opportunities to raise our voices, we thank this platform as well. Nothing without the people, nothing according to creation and the resources of the land, the country, without the people. We've been robbed for so long, yeah, we've been robbed for so long, we are hungry, people doesn't eat these stories, children doesn't eat stories. All these imperialists that is benefiting, they're leaving us with a death mark, we need to die, the consequences of what they are doing, we need to carry them, and that's not acceptable. Life is being granted to us by the Almighty, and we are the people that have foreseen, as we are today, as we are here, and tomorrow, the generation to come, we are here to protect this heritage and not leave a hole, a looping hole, we will be blamed for that shame. So all the animals and the trees, that is life which we depending on, if all this stuff can be allowed to happen here, then all our indigenous plants will be messed, all our medicine will be messed, as we are believers of creation and the medicine, also as the advantage they are taking of the great plant, marijuana, which the Rasta's have been fighting for and been criminalized for, but today, it is still those imperialists that is benefiting from those. So that is the same things that will happen to this, promising people jobs, empty promises, and they coming with their people to do these jobs, and we even die. The numbers of unemployment is raising, and the cost of living is raising by day, you don't talk about the salaries of the workers. When people talk about salaries, then they are shown the door, and been promised there are many more people that are in need of jobs, but the prices don't stand still, the prices are raising. To the information that we have gone through, it costs us four thousand renns for a bag of food, to fill up the bag of food for a family of seven in a household. So tell me, in urban areas, in cities, it's about three thousand renns to fill up that basket for the family. So where do we take these monies from, people that are unemployed? I'm here with fifty-five years of age, never been employed, I get children, seven, eight, nine children, thirteen dependents, how do I feed them? Here you coming with empty promises again, and you expecting us to accept, to die. You coming with laws of COVID, and this lies, we must buy. It is a shame to make the people die insane, we don't like it, we don't want it, to lock up people without food, there were no preparation for the food, for the people to prepare them, to secure the food, what we are busy now, to secure us, we are doing hubs right now to prepare ourselves, to secure the food, sustaining food, because we are dying of this MGO food, the food, fast-growing food that they are doing, we suffer the consequences of all those people that are earning the money, the money makers, where are they today? Most of them are not here, I don't see them, all those big benefic, business people, I don't see them here. We are dying and they are enjoying, that's not acceptable in a democratic society. And also, the gases, there are renewable gases, we are living in a place where the sun is hotly burning, we come with these resolutions, but on deaf ears. So I thank you, honorables, bless you.
First of all, I just want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Anella, surname is Umfondisi, I'm staying here in Grafrinet, I'm the ward councillor, ward three in Ashovo. I actually to put forward the fears that we have as the communities. We've been given a very short space, but I could engage with just a few, but I believe that quality is not better than quantity. So with the small amount that you can engage with a few people, is actually what can be implemented to the quality. My question is, what will happen to our people if this can be implemented? Because for instance, we all know that we are coming from Gers Lampis, nee? And then from there, we were told that if you use electricity, then you're gonna have a better life, but these days doesn't seem like that. We are sitting now with that problem of electricity, it therefore says we can as well sit with the gas problem. To start with gas, we are not used to gas, and all that we know that gas is a dangerous thing to play with. So our people are actually now going back to those Gers Lampis, because they have been blocked, there's no money to buy the electricity, when if they can buy the electricity, the units are so small, and then they end up making fire outside, and then you are back to square one. I also heard from those who knows that gas is in partnership with water, since we are in this drought area, where will the water now come from? Because there's months whereby, if I can make a comparison of the location side, they've been, be without water for years, it's more than months, whereas on the other side, you are only like a few days without water and stuff. And I know, I know community that we do want jobs for our kids, we do want jobs for our people, even if the jobs can come, they will only come for those who are eighteen to thirty-five. And I'm actually worried about the thirty-fives to fifty-fives, because as I'm standing here, I'm almost forty, but you won't say so. So it therefore says, it depends on the person, how fit you see yourself to do a specific job. So that must be taken away, or provision should. So that must be taken away or provision should be provided for those who are even having from 35 years old and up. And then the other thing is, will it be accommodating the poorest of the poorest, even insurance wise? Because the poor people, they don't even know where you start about insuring yourself. And then the other thing is whenever there's jobs here, jobs opportunities. The sadness is that our youth, there's no sport, there is nothing, the youth is in drugs. The only thing that our people are doing is to drink a lot. Now imagine with the air, which won't be even purified and stuff like that. So it will kill our people no further. And then when it comes to the dangers, will our people be taught how to use it? Some of us, for instance, here now, for instance, me, I'm having a gas stove. But my kids won't be able to use that thing if I'm not at home. They should use the other stove, the two plate. Because of you are afraid to use gas. So gas is not actually gonna help our community. And then for now, okay, the last one that I want to... In Hrafrenet even for gas, the smaller Njana gas that we are even now getting, we are only provided by build it and sometimes it doesn't even accommodate us all. So how will we be accommodated by it? Thank you.
Freude lehr.
Please to you leaders.
Ik is van Flipt Peterson.
I'm Flipt Peterson.
Ik is van Blar. Ik is van Blar.
I'm from Blar.
Organisatie.
It's an organization.
In Willamore.
We are based in Willamore.
Dat is een klein boeren opkommende, sikkelende organisatie.
It is an organization for upcoming farmers who are struggling and very small.
La mensen ja. En de andere ien is, ik is een lid van de achtergebleven Inqua stam van Bavians.
I'm a member of the Inqua tribe. We have been forgotten.
Ja, ons is gekant als organisatie.
As an organization, we are opposed.
Van die lieve 2021 gaswet.
To the new 2021 gas bill.
Ons sikkelen, ons sikkelen om grond en handen te krijgen.
We are struggling to obtain land.
Oms het bij de municipality twee honderd hectare niet in grond gekregen.
We obtained land from the municipality on a loan basis.
Oms woef en groot probleem is, oms het niet water en die Bavians niet.
The major problem we have is a lack of water in the Bavians area.
Ja, eigenlijk is die water wat ons gister en die Willamore gebreken, die...
This is a sample of the water that we had to use in Willamore. This is from yesterday.
Dit is de water waar je, de gemeenschap van Willamore moet tevreden weer.
This is the water that the community of Willamore has to be satisfied with.
En die water loopt niet in Willamore van voor ogen af tot van hand toe niet. Hier die water wordt net in die ogen de angeskakel voor op drie of twee en half hier. Dan wordt die weer afgeskakel. Maar die dag moet Willamore ze neerzetten, zonder water zo aanstukken, vier tot van hand pas sixt.
So this water doesn't flow throughout the day. It is opened and turned on for about three hours in the morning. It is turned off and only after six o'clock in the evening, we have access to water again. So the people of Willamore have to struggle and work without water throughout the day until it is activated in the evening again.
Verbije jaren is die klein achtergebleven boeren van Willamore hartser.
The small farmers, those who have been forgotten in the Willamore area, have been struggling.
Die regering van Bayer's Noeder heeft niet een belangstelling om die achtergebleven, sikkelende kleinboeren te ableven niet.
The government of Bayer's Noeder has no interest in helping these small farmers who are really struggling and who feel forgotten.
Dit wil voor ons als organisatie zeggen dat hier die wet van 2021 die sikkelende kleinboeren van Willamore neers gaan baden.
It seems that this gas bill of 2021 has no effect or promise of helping these small farmers who are struggling in the Willamore area.
Mijn bekondering is dat ons kinders na vijftig jaar nog erger gaan soort krijgen als wat onze heiliglijk nou krijgen.
My concern is that our children will even, will struggle and suffer even more in about 50 years than we are currently suffering now.
Ik wil dankje zeggen voor de panel.
I would like to thank the panel.
En ik hoop en ik vertrouw dat ons vier in de toekomst en zal lang moeten, bije bije dankje.
And I hope and trust that we will meet again in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input.
Waar dankje voor die inzette.
I stick to what I said.
Ik blij, ik volstand in wat ik gezegd.
I don't want when I live here, I'm no longer in talking terms with the members of the committee.
Ik wil niet het, wanneer ik hier is al verlaat het, ik nie meer met die, ik leer van die commiteer kan praten.
I will not answer anything about the bill.
Ik kan ongelukkig geen antwoord geven op vrouw, op hieri wetzond werk niet.
Because I'll be giving you my views.
Want dit zal betekenen dat ik mijn opinies als antwoord zal bied.
Like I said, we are a committee.
Zoals ik gezegd, ons is een commiteer.
We are different, we call the ministry, the department, we call them the executive.
Die ministers wordt die uitvoerende gesachen nu.
So if, just pray maybe, that I'm, I'll be minister, then when I come back, I can answer, give you a straight answer because I'm in charge of the department.
En ons kan betten dat ik minister word, dan kan ik terugkomen en antwoorden voor je geven, want dan zal ik een beheer weer is van die departement.
For now, I'm not in charge. The committee is in charge. I just point like I'm doing now, yes, honorable so and so, yes, honorable so and so. They take a decision. If that decision is not agreed to, they vote.
Dan is ik niet de die van hier die commiteer, ik is nieuw beheer niet.
So please, I, I, even if I'm tempted, I will avoid something that is unparliamentary, giving an answer that the committee doesn't know.
Maak niet zorg, hoe groot die verschuiking is, hoe maantwoordig je niet, ik kan het niet doen niet, want die commiteer moet eerst al weer beratslaag.
The first problem now, let me talk to the things that were directed to the committee.
Erste dingen, eerste, eerste wil ik proberen dingen wat verwijst wordt naar die commiteer.
If I'm not mistaken, we have more than 22 parties in parliament.
Als ik mijn name is gesne, is daar meer als twintig partijen in die parlement.
I'll check how many parties are in parliament.
Ik zal niet doen zeker maak hoeveel partijen in die parlement is.
All of them, they've got their own political views.
Alke partijet alle eigen politieke uitkijk en zienings.
At times it's like water and paraffin, you can mix them.
Soms is dit zo's water en welly of water en paraffin, is kan het niet, niet.
Now, I said, because Mr. Christian wants to put me in trouble. He says, are you going to take all these things? If you listen, my first statement, I said, we could have taken an option to deliberate on this proposed amendment on the bill. We make recommendation, it doesn't even go to, the choice we made was public hearing. Now, why would you make and come to public hearing if you know you are not going to do anything?
Waarom zal mensen, mijn vrouw, gaat dit in als iets betekenen? Als jullie geluisterd hebben wat ik gezegd, dit ik gezegd, daar was twee keuzes. Eerste was om hieri wetzond werk te fat, dit te bespreken en aanbevelings te maken. Die tweede optie was om hieri openbare verwerre te doen en om inzette te krijgen.
We started, maybe I should have said, but I didn't want because we don't have time. We started the process of public hearings last year November in Pumalanga.
Want het verleden jaren november, hieri verrichtingen van openbare verwerre beginnen in Pumalanga.
And we did it, unfortunately, committees of parliament can have any activity when parliament is in session. When the national assembly is in session, committees of parliament can only do committee work, not public hearings or what we call it oversight.
En ongelukkig, wanneer die parlement activiteiten aan de gang is, kan commitees niet dieel niemand openbare verwerre insovert, ons kan slechts commitees zaken aan tere.
So last year, because parliament was in session, we had to use weekends, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays.
En omdat daar verleden jaren parlementaire setting was, moest ons hieri verwerre, wer naweek a voltoei.
And we criticized some of these places that you are coming on a weekend when you know that we don't have time, we go to church. But we did, it's not that we don't go to church too, but we had to prioritize because we take a call that we will serve. And when you serve, you don't think of yourself, you think of the people that must give you information.
En ons is, ons is vreselijk gekriticiert omdat ons wer naweek moet werken, want mensen het gevoel alleen niet tijd niet, en dat we eerder kaart toe moeten gaan, ons moet ook kaart toe gaan, maar ongelukkig moet ons dit prioritieer. En als ons hier amp an vor, is het ons doel om die mensen te dien, en dit is wat ons gedun het.
Yes, I hope and I believe, all these members, they are listening, they are collecting. There are new things that, from where we are sitting, we may not have known at the time when these amendments were brought to us. So take it as if you are giving us information so that when we do deliberations, we are more informed.
Die commiteer sit hier en neem nu het als, en luister nou hier in zo. Zo, wanneer inlichting aan ons gebracht wordt en iet dit voor ons geeft, moet iet verstaan dat ons zal dit kan gebruiken, wanneer ons, ons vergaderen houdt in beratslaag doen, waar hierdie vooruitwaissagings wat voorgesteld is.
The reason now we get time is that parliament is only opening on the tenth through the state of the nation.
Die reden waarom ons nauw tijd het om hieri openbare verwerre te heen, is omdat die parlement eerst op de 10e februari zal open met die nationale staatsrede.
So we requested that we be allowed to go and do this work before the opening. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to go anywhere after that.
Daarom het ons een speciale verschuik gericht dat ons hieri werk kan afhandelen voor dat die parlement open. Anders zou ons niet gelegendheid krijgen om dit te voltoeien.
Lastly, to, at least, let's say, appreciate even the small justice. These members that are here, they will only go home on the 30th of January.
Moes voor die ook die moedte en inzette wat geden wordt, die hieri lieden, alles zal eerst einde van de maand heist u gaan.
Since they left on the 16th.
Alleet al die 16e laaisse verlaat, en zal eerst die 30ste januari kan teruggeen.
Only once they will be in a flight now.
Alles zal slechts een flage in die reit.
It will be from Cape Town to northern Cape.
En dat zo wie is van kopstad, tot in in werkt go.
Right through, they are driving on the road.
Die rischheid zal op het pad wie is.
For more than 15 days without being home.
Altso meer als 15 door, is wat op het pad zal wie is, zonder om hier na zijn site te gaan.
So rest assured, we are not ticking boxes. But what we can do is to change the thinking of people. They have got a right when they go to the committee to express their views on the experience they've seen. I can't tell them how they must think.
Zo wie is verschikker, hier is nie activiteit waar ons niet boxes voor afmerkt dat goed voltoeis niet. Ons kan niet voor mensen zeggen hoe alle moet denken, wat alle moet zeggen niet, dit is hoe kom ons hier is. Is om voor iet gelegendheid te geven om hieri inzao te lever.
The last two things someone said, do you, you want us to agree or not? I don't want you to do anything, I want you to express your views full stop.
Iemand het gezegd dat ik wil hier alle moet samenstem of de ten stand. Ik het niet zo gezegd, ik wil hier alle moet jullie opinies geven.
If you disagree, it's okay, we'll record you disagree. If you agree, we record you agree. It's not us who must tell you what to do, it will be wrong, what we want. We don't want anything, we want you to inform and power us so that when we discuss, at least we have got much more better knowledge than we had before.
Ons wil niet dat iet moet zeggen ja of nee, en je als je zo veel, dat iet niet samenstem niet, ons zal dit opnemen, en als je samenstem met die wetzond werk kan, je moet het ook zo op. Maar wat ons wil hier is dat iet inzao lever, dat ons, die kennis en inlichting kan verschamel, dat ons ingelig kan wees wanneer ons, ons besprekings doen, en dat ons bemachtig kan worden, die eri inlichting wat iet voor ons geeft.
Also the question was, what is the next process? The next process, when you are finished with the public hearing, I did explain. We will compile the report from the first public hearing we had in Pumalanga in Merspreek to the last public hearing we will have in the Free State, on the 29th.
Iet gevro, wat is die volgende stap nou hieri verwerre? Wat zal gebeuren is dat al die inzette wat gelever is, van die eerste setting wat ons gehad het, door die laatste ien wat ons zal hier opniegen in 20ste januari, zal alles samengevat worden en in een bundel geset worden.
So it's not one place where we go. We will have to take all those views in all the seven provinces that we are going to.
Het is niet niet een gebied se inzao wat geneem wordt voor die verslag niet. Alke provincie en alke zul of gebied wat ons beschuk, se inzette moet samengevoegd worden in hieri verslag.
Then we'll adopt that report. When we have adopted the report, then we will deliberate on the proposed amendment as a committee informed by what is contained in the report.
Daarna wordt die verslag an vor, die commitees zal dan bespreken zeg of beratslaag doen waar die inhoud van die... oor die inhoud van die, die voorgestelde wijzigings en dit sal gedunne word met die kennis wat ons ingesamel het uit hier die openbare verweer.
Then we don't take decisions, we make recommendations as a committee. We will then take those recommendations for the National Assembly to deliberate, adopt or reject them. If they are adopted in the National Assembly, they will then, that those proposed amendments will then be referred to the National Council of Provinces, which is the N C O P. It will be up to the N C O P to say, yes, we hear you, there was public hearing in National Assembly. They might come back here. I mean, can't speak for that house. But for us as a committee, we recommend to the House, which is the National Assembly. If the National Assembly adopts, it will take it to the National Council of Provinces. The select committee of the N C O P will decide what to do with the bill.
So wanneer ons nou hier die beratslaag en dun, uh, opie verschlag, sal ons aanbevelings maak. En daar die aanbevelings word gehe aan die nationale vergaderen, wat dan weer daar op die debatier en besluit of helaar dit wel anvaar of nie of verwerp. En wanneer dit anvaar word, sal dit verwaes word naar die nationale raad van provincies, wat dan kennis draa van die openbare verweer en die aanbevelings wat gemaak word daar. Die komiteer van die nationale raad van provincies zal dan besluit wat gaan word met die voorgestelde wijzigings.
We note, I want to, to deal with that thing. We note that, I want to take it as a statement so that it is recorded.
Ek het vrouw gestelling maak?
You say, someone said, the department has not been here to listen and hear the views before it made those proposed amendments for the attention of parla- of, of parliament. So we will take that as a recommendation, but we can't work with the executive, the executive must account to us. Now, if we're to come with the department here, then why are we listening to your views? If they fail to do their work, we'll have to put that on record that amongst other things, the department has not conveyed the views of the public. Yes, I agree, in principle, I'm not saying about going saying God, we find we go on ted, we are correct, but we serve as executive, no, I tea.
So, ek wil, daar is gestelling gemaak dat die-
No, don't worry, the other one will put the interpretation on the, on the cross section.
Goed, dankie. So wanneer daar een aanbeveling, of daar is ik gestelling gemaak dat die departement nie hier was om inlichting te ge oor die voorgestelde wijzigings nie. En ons sal kennis nemen, of en ons sal dit anmeld in die, in die wetsontwaartefat. Want daar moet rekenskap gegeer word aan ons.
So, we take note of that, okay?
In sani, die departement het nie gekomi, in dinen helaar nie gekom het nie. Dan zal het dit oordraan helaar toe, het is goed dat julle dit ingeluk het aan ons, dat de departement het nie hier draai kom ak met an dinen.
So, you relieved. There was another question, you did not introduce the portfolios of others. We are a portfolio committee. They call it in the National Assembly, a portfolio committee. They call it in the N C O P, a select committee. There is no portfolio attached to anyone except me.
Ons, ons is een portefili komiteer, ons is een gekoese komiteer in, in die parlement. Daar is nie een departement wat die rek aan ons verbind is nie.
So I, I, I thought I must explain, but a committee of parliament, there are many, I don't know how many portfolio committees will find. There will be portfolio committee for an example on justice and correctional service. There will be committee on environment. There will be committee on, on public enterprise. There is a portfolio committee on public works and infrastructure, there are many. There is a park committee on small business. There are many committees in parliament.
Daar is wanneer verschrikke komiteers in die parlement? Van verschrikende, verschrikende of die alles.
If you want to make your work easy, each and every department has got a portfolio committee that it accounts to.
Om die werk voor i maklik te maak, het elke departement een gekoese portefili komiteer aan wie helaar verantwoordbaar is?
Uh, maybe then, because, uh, if we must just be conscious, can we take the last round of hands, even if it's five?
Kan ons ook niet de laatste ronde handen krij, ook niet vijf mensen?
I'm starting with six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. No, say, unfortunately, we take only ten, ten six.
Tien is hier die laatste beschuin.
Now, the number one, six, opo, to the fucking, to say, wow, hey. Please, this is a mobile card.
Let's stick to the time, please.
He is, he is so absurd, he is so loud, he is loud, he is. Number two. He mag in the senate, he is.
Goeiemiddag aan die panel. Um, ek is Ellen Kam, ek is van Kliplaat.
Good afternoon to the panel. My name is Ellen Kam and I'm from Kliplaat.
Um, ik wil graag aan i vooro dat ons in Kliplaat is op die oomblik bij je verlediore wer. Maar as gevolg van die waterprobleem in Kliplaat, het, sal ek se, dat is op die oomblik onmoontlik voor um die gas project plaats te verlaten.
What I would like to say to you is that regarding the situation, current situation in Kliplaat, we really need work. But there is a huge water problem in Kliplaat at the same time. And because of that, we feel that this concept, this idea of the gas exploitation is impossible.
Um, eindelijk, bij je dankbaar wees en se voor die departam- voor die government wat vandaag hier in Gravenet is. En mijn hoogste probleem is dat die watersituatie in Kliplaat is vanaf zeven uur tot omtrent twaalf uur, dan zag geen water men. En ons krij vanaf Gravenet water Kliplaat.
Firstly, I would let, say, I would tell, like to tell you how grateful I am for you being here today. And then, secondly, regarding the water problem, the situation in Kliplaat, there's no water from seven A M in the morning till twelve noon. And then we do get some water from Gravenet.
Uh, please, can, can we request that we lower our voices as we con- we do conversation with those next to us? Continue, man.
Um, mijn volgende, um, inzete wat ik lever is, um, die, 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 die armude in Kliplaat is soegrood dat, dat is geen winkels, dat is die postkanthoor, dat is die bankenie. Om travelling is moeilijk. Ons rijt twintertig kilo's vanaf Kliplaat tot Janssenville om groceries, creden, hier ware te koop, inkoopies te doen.
My next input regards the po- the poverty problem in Kliplaat. There are no shops, there's no post office, there are no banks. And when we want to do our groceries, um, our shopping, we have to travel thirty-two kilometers from Kliplaat to Janssenville.
En it is one hundred ren. For return, is it one hundred ren, single, fifty ren. That is our need in Kliplaat. Um, ek springs me oor af. Um, wat ik wil se is, um, ek gloestele, as i in Kliplaat kom, sal jie zien die serie van kinders, sopkombees, geven die kinders eten en ons strakel om kopbo water te hou. Dus hoe kom ek se, um, ons sal graag wil hee dat daar een job, soos bijvoorbeeld die gas in Kliplaat moet kom, maar as gevolg van die water is dit nie, uh, uh, sal het nie werken nie.
Work nie. I would, I would really have liked you to see the situation in Kliplaat, the poverty and the, uh, how it affects our children. There are soup kitchens that are needed to feed our children. And for that reason, you can see that we are really in dire need of employment in Kliplaat. But because of the water scarcity situation, it will not be possible.
Um, ek is bij je dankbaar. Ek staan af en ek hoop, terugvoeren sal ons definitief krij. En ek hoop en ek gloe dat dit nie de laatste keer of die eerste keer dat hiele, uh, hier sal wees, maar dat hiele terug naar ons so sal keer. Bij je dank, eh?
I am very grateful for your presence here today. And I would really like, um, to ask that we will be getting feedback from you and that this will not be the last time that you come to visit us. I thank you.
Uh, let me greet you all. My name is Luton Domali and I'm from Janssenville. First of all, I would like to say that, uh, in terms of states, if you check, the Eastern Cape is one of the highest, highest unemployment rate, if you can check in terms of states. Even the Carrouge is one of the highest and driest places you can find. Therefore, on those words, I trust and believe that there are plans in place to make the project a success. By that, I'm saying that Janssenville supports the gas amendment bill. And I'm further going to include pointers on the amendment bill. On the issue of sanction, according to my understanding, in terms of levels or grades, there are three streams. There's upstream, midstream and downstream. Therefore imposing the sanction of two million and breaking it down. My additions are sanction must differ according to grade or levels. Sanction one of upstream, it must be at least from two million and above. Midstream must be from one million towards two million. The downstream, it must be at least from zero to five hundred thousand pending on experience, annual income in terms of the company, years of operation and compliance. And also pending on, on what the, the company is sanctioned for. Also adding that, the bill must seek to improve and uplift S M Es, increase employment rate and improve and develop the affected areas. Those are my additions. Uh, as I'm Luton Domali from Janssenville. And I would like to add a few words that from members of our community that this project is big as we are crying that there's high employment rate in our area. Therefore, this project seeks to improve the quality of our lives, the economy of our area and for the better of our livelihoods. And I'm sure that in terms of the water, there are plans in place. And plans in place will also make sure that the whole of our area benefits in that. So I want people not to be scared. The reason why other areas are growing is because they can see growth opportunities from far. But when they come to us, we, 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 we come with lame excuses for development not to happen. And it can be that in our area when such a big project is coming, billions and billions and us trying to drive those billions away from us. And I know that it's not about money, but also we must understand that we can't live without money. I thank you.
My name is Aubrey Nombande from Janssenville. I want to thank you very much, Chairperson Ngonyenekomidiako, to brought us this opportunity today.
I would thank you, Chairperson and the entire committee for bringing this bill to our area.
Chairperson, mine would be very short. I can hear people abandon, they are criticizing. I did not hear you say to us, you are bringing a gas project. I didn't hear that, but abandon to buy a car car this amendment.
I could observe that our people are criticizing the amendment bill, although there's no way that the chairperson said he is bringing any big businesses to us.
Yes, I did hear you clearly to say you've been traveling the whole South Africa. But you do not say specifically, you are here for the gas project. So my question is, Chairperson, in Abathu, this area of ours, there will be a possibility that we will have a gas project?
I would like to establish whether is there any possibility of having a gas project in our own area?
I'm a business person, Chairperson, and a committee ago. I saw or I see the business opportunities. Because in our area, as my colleague has mentioned that, the employment rate is too high. So when, when we have this gas bill, I saw opportunity to everyone, that will be benefit to this project. If there's any, if there is any project that is coming to us, I will accept this bill. If there's any project that is coming to us, I will accept this bill. God agai, weli futani.
But to cut matters short?
I zone net en do ba abandee vo mele bill.
It will not help me in accepting the bill?
Because according to affect them now to this bill.
Because the contents of the bill do not affect me as a person.
But as I said earlier on, if does affect me, I'll accept this bill. Because this bill will bring a green passage to us. Thank you very much.
Mijn naam is Kuis Adams. Ik is een woner van Graafrenet en van die oerskaap. Chee, Kuis Adams.
G'day Chair, my name is Kuis Adams.
Jij die vraag ons zo opgemaakt vandaag.
You've opened this meeting today.
Nou, ik wil beginnen bij jullie aasel.
I would like to start with you there.
Ik weet die wat de partij jullie bewortie.
I don't know which party you belong to.
Maar allemaal van jullie met jullie sokjes optrek.
But all of you need to get your act together.
Allemaal wat in de parlement is of jij K of F is.
Doesn't matter who you are in the parliament.
On's kijk jullie.
We see you.
On's dit dom mensen niet.
We are not stupid.
Jullie moeten werken, laten die arme mensen beter toe komen zetten.
You need to work so that these poor people can have a better future.
Die bill, ik had gehoord jullie toen uitgeveeg. Ik had gekomen voor die billen en wilde, hey, damenje Tando. Het was wel laat geweest gister. Maar als ons meer van sikkie amtenaren krijgen staan door en net die tijd langer maakt om mensen te verdijdelijk, dat zou jullie helpen in de parlement.
You need more people like that lady Tando, who makes enough time to explain this bill to us.
Mensen graag aan in gas wat ongesond is, water.
People are talking about gas that's unhealthy and water.
Ik is al bij 70 jaar en in die 70 jaar doe weet ik wat is gas.
I'm almost 70 years old and in my time I know what gas is.
Gas komt hier voor eerste mal nu niet.
Gas doesn't just happen.
Maar wat ik hier zie.
But what I'm seeing here.
In hier die bill.
In this bill.
Nersha, het dit dan in.
Nersha has no, has no bite.
Jullie praat van if.
They all use this term if.
Wat is if?
What, what is if?
Zo ik kan niet doen wat ik wil.
So I can just do what I want to?
Ik is, ik had gewoon die, bij de kan die door, ik maak een voorbeeld.
As an example, I have land just outside of town.
Ik vang aan ons eens en ik had mijn ije kracht wat ik ga voorwerk.
I can do what I want on my farm, I generate my electricity.
Nersha kan mij niks doen niet.
Nersha can't do anything to me.
Jullie praat van if.
But now they're talking about if.
Kijk aan na, hij beworden en veranderen.
Look at that wording and change it.
Net voor ochend. Zeg jullie, Nersha is bezig om die mensen te ontmoeten.
Just this morning, they were saying that Nersha is busy meeting with people.
Nou als een, als een dom karuenaar.
So as a stupid person from the Karu.
Zeg ik mezelf, maar die mensen in die plateland kan niet meer betaal bekrijgen.
I'm saying to myself, but the people from, from the Karu can't pay more for electricity.
Eskom moet ze is in orde krijgen.
Eskom needs to get its act together.
Zo dat die mensen niet nodig hebben om meer te betalen bekrijgen.
So the people don't need to pay more for electricity.
Die swakmisse politica, als dat die raadvlekten, jullie kijk hier wat gebeurde.
These municipalities are terribly run.
Jullie van die geld waar je aan Eskom toe gaan, dat gebreekelt voor jullie.
These politicians don't allocate the funds correctly, they use it for themselves.
On betalen onze kracht.
We are paying for electricity.
Maar word je, die door schuilt zo veel bekrijgen.
But you hear the, the town municipality gets electricity.
En als je krachtje betaal je ze snel hem af.
And if they don't pay it, they cut it off.
Want die schuilt lijn niet bij die inwoners.
They, they don't have any responsibility towards the residents.
Die municipalities, ze pleedieren jullie, solarische om die kracht, dat de betaling die kracht bij Eskom in.
The municipalities are using the, the money for electricity to subsidize their own salaries.
Jullie moeten wakker skok aan in de parlement, want jullie hebben wakker.
You need to catch a wake up in parliament.
Vandaag word ik die mensen praat van gesondheid.
Today I'm hearing people talk about health.
Als je praat van gesondheid, dat ben je een totaal van om praat.
When you're talking about health, you need to talk about health in its entirety.
Die vallis niet, die vallis van hier lijn niet.
Rubbish can't lie around.
Die revieren met die villis.
The rivers can't be dirty.
Die is gewaarigd door gas.
You are worried about gas.
Maar je praat die van die mossige geet wat die niet doorbanken.
But you're not talking about the mess that's happening in town.
Check your verstand.
Check your, check your thought process.
Armude. Vandaag het het geword, dat klaar naar de government toe, klaar naar de government toe.
There's poverty and you hear people.
Maar zo die laat u die draks en die doorpuit krijgen niet, dat zal er midden armude weer.
There's, there's poverty and, and people are complaining to government, but, but it needs to start in the towns.
Och, praat die van gefatke breakboard en landen niet.
We're not talking about poison being used in, in agriculture.
Och, praat net over hoe gevaarlijk is gas.
We're just talking about how dangerous gas is.
En gas bestaan, van mijn geboorte af bestaan gas.
And gas has been in existence since I've been born.
Daar bij die dam, die boer en die pa, wat noemen die dam, oranje dam, wat ook kan.
There's a dam in that, that area up there.
Ik zie naast ik een sleesje, jullie wat nog ja, was.
When you haven't been there, you'll see, there's sluices.
En een van hij sleesjes staan na op Graafrenet.
And on one of those sluices, it stands, it's written Graafrenet.
Kijk, hoe komt dat water in Graafrenet gekomen? Want als Graafrenet hij water krijgt, dan gaat Kliplaat dit, Janssenville gaat dit en zo gaan je anderen, andere mensen gaan werk krijgen, want dan gaat geplant eraan.
And go see why that sluice isn't being opened, because if that sluice is open in Graafrenet, then all the subsequent towns will get water.
Die Reinerveld dam, hier woont weebach. Was gekocht, maar weet je hoeveel miljoen.
De Reinerveld dam was, was purchased for millions.
What elephant?
It's a white elephant at this point.
Chee.
Chairperson?
Ik heb praat van, hoe rij jullie?
You spoke about regulation.
En ik had lekker gevoel, och, kreeg ik die kaas om hier goed voor jullie te zeggen niet?
And I felt very positive, because we don't get an opportunity to say these things.
Ik had lekker gevoel, zo word ik die zeggen, jullie rij niet meer bij een aeroplyi. Flugtegen, jullie rijden niet meer bij een flugtegen.
And this morning you said that you, you don't fly with airplanes a lot.
Met geen kwad beduldig.
No hard feelings.
Nipke die het gaat was.
But look at these expenses.
Als de parlement wil sparen, moet ik knip, hoe is zo bij een aeroplyi?
If the government wants to save us, don't fly around.
Hoe is zo bij een hotel, jij praat die waarheid met handfuls. Minne hotel is zo bij een leen man. Och, dat, die wat er koelzang, koelik en brood geëet. Dat bij ons voor twee, drie weken in het plek.
We, we ate bread and cold drink and we could stay in that place for weeks.
Spaar, spar, laten die mensen op je grond zien jullie spaar en het gaan beter moeten lopen.
Save money so that people on the ground level will see that you are saving money and it will go better with you.
En die inwoners van, hier is nog die man. Laten ons onze sokjes optellen en kijk, dat die mensen die goed afbreken ja die government, wie moet komen rechtmakken.
We need to get our act together so that the government, we have to fix things constantly.
Hulp pompe wordt gestiel, krachtgraad wordt gestiel, ons moet kijk naar hij voeten.
We need to look after our infrastructure.
Chee, ik, ik follow you, ik kijk jullie.
I'm looking at you Chair, I see you.
Laten ons, laten ons zien, dat is veranderen, hoe opblijen aan die parlement, maar jullie leer ons ook blij dank.
We want to see changes and you need to stop fighting in parliament.
Good people, I, I go back, not because we are told about planes or no planes. Can we be fair?
Kan dus het bij fracht verder werken.
One, we are not working on our own rules. If it was my meeting, this one, I would allow you to speak as much as you like.
Het was werkelijk, het was eigenlijk, als het mij verhoord en ik was niet procent lang, was je wel.
Meetings of a committee of parliament have a start time and an end time. And when that time has come, it's not my choice. I have to stop the meeting at that point. Now, if we are gonna spend 10 minutes and we attend, it means it's 50 minutes when somebody is gonna speak more than 10 minutes. Please, let's be fair. Number two, there is one thing that is very unfair. To speak first and take too long and then the next thing, you are gone out of the meeting, then you leave other people behind. Let's be fair to each other. Can we try to stick to three minutes? So that everyone who's here, we don't say time is up and then we, we end up like we are selfish, we didn't come. Unfortunately, in parliament, you don't call a meeting and decide what time it ends. You are given a slot and you must use exactly that time because the staff of parliament must also go to another committee and service that committee. Please, and when we, for an example, we set up until 1 o'clock, once we reach 1 o'clock, all these people are supposed to be packing their things and going to go to somewhere else. Continue, Tom Cool.
Kan dus bij verklaren.
Ik nee drie dingen wat ik wil rukken, maar ik nie meer samenstem bij die amendments.
There are three things that I would like to mention, three items that I'm not, I don't agree with.
Ja, en ik voel dat, as of when I did dingen, I can't see the amendments on farri. My name is Harold Williams. I'm from Willamore and the organization Blauw, small farmers. The first one is, the BE must be updated. Because we don't see anything in this bill, how it is, how it is updated. And then the, the second one will be the exploration of, of, of gas. Because in the mines, in, in, in the Vale, we see there's illegal miners. We would like to see the, the exploration of, 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 of exploration and the process itself amended to the bill. Or otherwise it is rejected, because then the indigenous people of South Africa will never get a chance to get into, into the gas business. The third, the third one is the master plan. The master plan can't be said by, 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 by the minister alone. We would like to see that there must be inputs from the, from, from, from the public. Because he's not God to, to, to South Africa. Thank you.
Greetings to all in the room. Committee, you are greeted and welcomed in Graafrenet. My name is Roshida Elias, born and bred in Graafrenet. I am speaking on behalf of the woman in my community, informal settlement in Freichronde. I am from the universal movement of Rastafari Royal Family. Today, we are the mothers. And it is of great concern to raise a voice today. Because we are the mothers and tomorrow we have children, that is our future leaders. I have a lot to say, committee. But unfortunately, the time is against us. If we can speak, we can speak the whole day today. But unfortunately, protocol must be followed. Therefore, I would like to say that as a mother and as a leader in my community, we say no to this bill. Because this bill, it will be not of benefit for us. Yes, the unemployment rate is very high. Our youth, when they go out of the, the, the matrix, the schools, they end up sitting at home. We've got a lot of people sitting at home. But we rather say no to money full of blood than to accept that money. We say no to this bill, we are not accepting it. Thank you.
Ik houd die commitee en die voorzitter met de groep van vrede.
I would, I would.
Mijn naam is Theresa Barnet.
My name is Theresa Barnet and I would like to greet the Chair with, sorry.
Ik is van Willamore, voorzitter van Blauw, vrouwen organisatie.
I am from Willamore and I'm the Chair Lady of the organization Blauw.
Onze is vrouwen, wat boer en plant.
We are, we are a group of women, farmers, we farm and we plant.
Ik wil jullie bedankt voor die informatie wat jullie voor ons kom geven. Eerst voor mijn vrouw Tandy, Betty, en dan die commitee wat vandaag is.
I would like to thank you for the information you brought to us here today. Firstly, I would like to thank Tandy and then also the committee here.
Ik had drie punten wat ik net wil zeggen en dan gaan ik op die laatste, die input van ons als vrouwen geven. Jullie weet gas?
I've got three points that I would like to discuss or mention here and.
Gas gaan gepaard met water en ons zit al reeds in Willamore met watercrisis. Is punt nummer één.
My first point is our water situation, once again, gas and water. It's a bit of a problem because water scarcity is a problem in this area, as you know.
Die tweede één is ons, onze natuur wordt besudel der gasse en der reekke.
My second point is the issue of pollution and our habitat, our environment. and our habitat, our environment are being polluted by gas.
Zo wordt ons familie, onze vier en planten wordt nodig der effect der gas en die gasse wat afgeschied wordt.
And this gas, it will affect everything, from our family, our plants and even our cattle.
Ik sta hier als vrouw vertegenwoordiger van Willamores Blaaf vrouwen. Ik sta hier als een mama.
I stand here as a representative of the organization Blaaf and I also stand here as a mother.
En ik sta hier voor de gemeente.
And I also stand for the community.
Ons vraag i en ik is beopdracht om die input te geven.
I would like to ask you and I have also been asked to give this input.
Ons aanvaar niet die bill niet geen... Ik, dat is niet ons aanvaard het niet, onze greenie daarmee niet. Want ons, als mammas, als vrouwen, consider onze familie, onze community, ze gezond.
We do not accept this bill, we do not agree to it because we as mothers, we are worried about or we take into account the health of our families, our children and our community.
Zo ons zijn hier voor iedere act en input.
We say no to this act.
Mandy Bulisse. Greetings to the members of the committee in attendance and the community at large. Is het uiteraard, is het uiteraard. Gabant, wat was pete op deze lupe ja. And I'm referring to the people who are our representatives that have come to our area. Bezit ze lomkulu, okanje, betem, wat is ze lomkulu, pakat kwet. They have brought the bill for us to consider. Ok, we zitten binnen, man, dit is klasse, Tandy zag ongelisa, bani, gebani? Let me introduce myself before I go any further. En de go Simon. My name is Simon. En de go Gatazo. Gatazo is another name. De go Akwa Ngayenge. My surname is Ngayenge. Eh... De puma wakumbutwana, otet chichilikwele, de puma kuloni. I am coming from an organization that is well established throughout the eastern Cape province. Abane abati, kumbutolungla. Other people say it is a good organization. Abane abati, kumbutongalungang. Other people say it is a bad organization. Kuba, kumtubona, kubona. People have got a right to have different views or opinions. Ok, twa ngu, unedho, taxi association. The name of my organization is Unedho Taxi Association. God, wat getina, sime kweela se half. We are based in Krafrenet. City ababange lendo, okababe konaba bandwa pa ngapakati, ukuse bezet kwenza, ni kuso uk. Is our organization that provide a transport to the people as you can see them there in attendance. Man, dit tulege a. Let me proceed. Man, be des tal van de signaling, dit is opboya, dit is tetengomkulu. I would like to have a small request before I focus on the bill. And this is posa, kialam twi, ni nabazas boeki, kialam, okweino. I am not going to put blame to anybody, you are going to blame yourselves. Utata wendru, umne kumtecho. The head of the family gives rules or laws to be followed to the children. Is abandwaana, kubo bautate, abane bautjezen. Some children will take the laws from their parent, others will have a tendency of neglecting the laws or rules from their father. Ndolui tetayo. What do I mean by that? Eh... De benok sokola, ukutile, pamgokba kutiban, ababan, babe eklen da. I did encounter some challenges before I managed to bring these people to this session. Die finak pekis lungi sokewona, die sondes alendo. I would like the committee to make some corrections, that's why I'm raising the matter. Ik khalige, hiolen, die bankel, man, hi pakamiselenda. It is repetitive, that's why I am raising it now. Papkimitlanga, minshenga lena, kupfanel dookba, ababantu ba ya lela, abaya, fneka benzumsebin. If we are, we will be having sessions of this nature, the people who are giving instructions for others to coordinate these sessions, fneka pek, commando, bawe lande la, ba yenze kanalando. They must be monitoring to make sure that the instructions are carried through. Kulunkileke, and this is bekam tu kiala. If faili shila, if faili she konak, konan da za, mbama si kokelele. I am not going to put blame to anybody. It failed somewhere, but let me leave that for now because we had to make ends meet. Mas lungselenda, ukupi zoa kwen, komstanga, no, lo, pek kupfanel, ukupi zoa, ngekkai echa, okanyo, azise abantu, ngekkai echa. People were supposed to be invited to this session on time. Ukuse kwazi, ubakuza ukala, ndoni nanamtange, ukupi zoa, kwalen, tanga, ni za ukala. So that people, when they come and attend, they are well informed of what will be the contents of the discussions or debates that will unfold. San bo ta tange, sebe kumile, okba bekstwa, in tanga ni so, yok lungsumdu, ten sumsekele. For an example, if this meeting was directed at correcting the wrong that someone has done, we should have all gone home by now. Kuba, okmnanza, tetange, duenseka, apa eh eh half, ndo dookba, umaspa la, wenza ndoni, wenza ndoni, kantukuse, wey ndo yomkulu. Because I am going to focus my attention to the failures of our municipalities whereas the committee has brought the bill for us to engage it. Ten homsali ken, dit man lungselonda, ba, eh, bei pindi senzeka, londo lena, sas, sas is uengekkai echa, abandwa, zo kwaas, ba, zo kwaas, em, em, pakatin dookba, ukuse landoni na. As a parent, I felt that let me raise the matter so that you can correct it so that when you come in future, you must inform people about the contents of the discussion so that they can come well prepared and participate meaningfully. Kuchigalezo longe, ten butata stalo, eh, si cho. You are traveling throughout the provinces as the chairperson has indicated, malunganalo mkulu. Tapling the bill to all the communities and provinces. Agutwangu ba, is apeh half, mkulos zausven, is apeh half. This bill is not going to be applicable only in Krafrenet, only, yes. Lordetetndoba, is out chichilikulo longe, ni weyo de South Africa. That means the bill will be applicable to South Africa as a whole. Okanje, sabes, pini sas, is uwa, is abasenda, one etile. Or at a later stage, we might be informed of which area is it going to be implementable. Dit chukutke, nobody gyalala, lendo, ai zu ngetando, because akupalo, angidokba, is abanda onina. Even if I can reject the bill, we were not informed as to which areas will be affected or which areas the bill will be implemented to. Nobody gai fuma, akonti zaupi, in die, in die tapasela, because andi ya zaupi za ukala konak, okanje za kwenzeka konak li bill. Even if I can accept the bill, there are no strings attached in that. There is no specific area where the bill will be highly implementable. Gelipanjreke, mnan, dia, misana, na yonkin, ndengati yenzeka, kanga skey yenzeke, inga tetwa. Ah, my position is that I support everything that you have brought in front of us, but it must not be a lip service. We need to see a result that this thing is really implemented in front of us. En koskaku. I thank you very much.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the portfolio committee. Okay. Thank you very much for this opportunity to address you today. I'm Crizon Jansevan Fieran from the Support Center for Land Change, Osklik. We are a social environmental organization operating in the eastern and the western Cape. So regarding the proposed gas amendment bill, we have already submitted very detailed input under or in the submission that was handed in by the Center for Environmental Rights to Parliament. So I'm not really going to dwell on the various aspects of what we find problematic in the act itself. I just wanted to make use of this opportunity to tell you, the committee, that as an organization, we reject the entire gas amendment bill, the entire bill. We don't want any of it because we feel that it is not in line with the global climate targets. If we want any chance of survival on this planet, we absolutely have to keep global warming below 1.5 degrees. So on our current trajectory, we are already at about 2% if we continue on this path. So now adding gas to the current fossil fuel mix that we are already utilizing in the country, it will have a devastating impact and it will contribute largely to what we are already emitting, the greenhouse gases that we are already putting out there. As a country, I think we among the top 10 polluters in the world and we're not even a rich country, we are poor, that doesn't make sense at all. And I think methane that comes from gas is responsible for 25% of the global greenhouse gas emissions. So if we now have a bill or we amend a bill that will make provision for more, for gas, you know, infrastructure for the development, the exploration and the production of gas, I don't, I just don't see that, how that can, I don't see how that can be done because we are experiencing, it's been raised by this house that we are already experiencing severe drought, extreme temperatures like you are able to experience today for yourself. This is nothing new to us. And if we continue on this path, we are going to die and I'm not exaggerating. So as an organization representing vulnerable people in this area, including the small-scale farmers who are not resilient against climate change at all because they don't have the resources to mitigate or to adapt and the informal settlement dwellers even. They just don't have the necessary resources to withstand a climate disaster and we've had so many already. We had some rain recently, just after the rain, we had six different swarms of locusts and that's all part of the climate crisis that we are faced with. So I really don't want to be taking up too much of your time, but just to state it very clear for the record that we don't want that bill because we don't want any more gas. Thank you.
My name is Christo Williams. Ik is van Kliplat.
I'm from Kliplat.
Uh, sorry, 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 good people, sorry, sorry, I'm...
Young man.
Good people. Sorry.
Thomas in Yere.
Can I make this request, please?
Groge verzoeker.
Wait, there are two, and I said, ma'am, and I don't, I don't want to sound like I respect people. If all these people were to stand up, all of them go to the queue without the chairperson, giving them that due recognition, I sent the secretary, I said, when these people are finished, I will make an announcement. I can't go to your place, you are in charge of your place, I come in, I do as I wish. Can we please respect even us for the small time we are almost finishing? I said I will make an announcement when these other people are finished, please. Eh... As I said, ik is van Kliplat.
As I said, I'm from Kliplat.
Een company genaamd Promo Enterprise.
There's a company named Promo Enterprise.
Onze main doel om een hier die dokterbeurs no diemunicipaliteit.
It is our main purpose for this base no diemunicipality.
Om zonkracht te verwerk.
To generate solar power.
Om aan die julle dokterbeurs no diemunicipaliteit kracht te verzien.
To supply the entire dokterbeurs no diemunicipality with electricity.
Onze company is al in een geforderte stadium.
Our company is at a, is at a very advanced stage.
Op jij de geomblad, bekomm ons nog net fondsen om die jille ding van stapel te stier.
At this point, we require funding to execute the entire operation.
Ons wil van die zon af kracht voorzien om Escom wat zo sikel te helpen.
We would like to generate solar power so that we can supplement Escom who is struggling to generate enough electricity.
Onze main doel voor dit is om die gemeenschap te helpen. Want op jij de geomblad, als ons kijk naar die, naar die eh eh eenje de wat die, wat die man op die straat moet betalen, is komme maken voorbeeld toe, 30 rand voor elf eenje de kracht. Dat is beetje godsoonmoedelijk voor een mens op die straat om daarvan te leven.
So our main purpose with generating solar electricity is to help the community because at the current stage, the price per unit is extremely expensive. I'm talking about almost 30 rand for 11 units. It is almost impossible for the man on the street to be able to afford that.
En als ons mooi naar die nieuws kijk, op jij de geomblad, wil Nerza weer increase maken op die kracht.
And if we listen to the news carefully, it seems as if Nerza wants to implement another electricity price hike.
En dat is die mooi niet.
And that is not fair.
Voor een man op die straat.
Especially not to the man on the street.
Als ons een verskill kan maken aan andere mensen's leven.
If we can make a difference in the lives of other people.
Dan maken ons jou plekje op jemel doen, want je maken verskill je help, die wat op je punt staan om te sliver.
And then we open up a route to heaven because we are helping those who are struggling.
Maar dit dag al laat.
That being said.
Ons hebt in Kliplat die bill, die amendment bill gediscuss.
We have discussed this amendment bill in Kliplat.
En ons aanvaarden met, hoe kan ik zeggen, bijvoegings op de jige, proposed amendment bill.
We would be fine with certain additions to the proposed amendments.
De eerste één is Nerza moeten ik togetikreelen, moeten ik rechtkrijgen om dingen te implementeer.
So firstly, Nerza needs to get their act together so that things can be implemented properly.
Als ons mooi kijk, ik denk voor jij jaar had die minister voor Nerza opdracht gegeven voor de issuing van licenses om het te shorten, zeg rech, om het te shorten, want Nerza te langgevat om licenses uit te geven.
If I am correct, the minister gave Nerza a mandate to shorten the process of issuing licenses, am I correct?
En dan die prices, om die price hikes.
Then another issue is the price hikes.
Nerza moet een survey doen, survey doen. Je kan niet net de price hike, elke keer als Escom noons is aanvang, dan moet mensen meer betalen. Want Escom kreeg geld van die regering af om hem zelf recht te krijgen, maar in de van die dag moet die man in die straat betalen.
So Nerza would need to do surveys and implement that because at this point, the government is giving Escom money and they are... because at this point, the government is giving Escom money and they are misappropriating it and eventually it's the man on the street that has to fit the bill.
And then, nog een is, die minister heeft te veel macht.
Thirdly, the minister has too much power. So with the drafting of this master plan, it needs to be taken to the man on the street and then go up levels from there to Nersha, to the higher levels.
And lastly, lastly, if ever, if ever, als die amendment bill goed gekir wordt, als daar, word wat ik zeg, als daar een geleentje is
Should this bill ever be approved, we need to see that opportunities will be created to uplift the circumstances in this area.
I thank you.
Thank you very much.
G'day to you all. Honourable Chairperson and your committee, thank you for this opportunity granted to me. My name is George Juanita Williams. I am a representative of the DA. I'm only here to submit our submissions as the DA, which is the current ruling party in Dr. Bayes No Dier municipal. We reject the bill. Forward, okay, sorry, sorry, sorry. Is it better? We reject the bill based on the following reasons. Section 23 provides the minister with far too many powers in respect of his or her determinations and this list must be reviewed to ensure that proper accountability and transparency can be done over the minister in their capacity or make these determinations. This is all from my side. I thank you so much.
G'day, my name is Latoya Cock. I'd like to say that has, okay, I am part of the First Nation. So based on that, we are going to reject this bill as well. We have a responsibility to look after the earth, specifically South Africa, that's where we've been all these years. We have a responsibility to look after it and if you look at the gas that is being produced, which is methane, I just want to read, it says methane is potent greenhouse gas with global warming potential of 84 to 86 times greater than carbon dioxide over 20 years. If you've got, so if you look at how they're going to transport the gas, the potential for methane leakage along the proposed national gas pipeline, if you've got 3,500 kilometres of gas pipeline, they're going to be flaring at every 187 kilometres. You could have a pipe flaring in your own backyard and causing respiratory problems. I want to highlight that when it comes to methane, the side effects are in, it decreases air quality, it leads to premature death in humans and it reduces crop yield. So there was a lady farmer who came up here and also spoke, but if we look at what it's going to be doing and the impact it's going to have on the community, already with the community that is struggling to get jobs, struggling to get proper healthcare, it's not going to be a blessing for us, it's going to actually take our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are completely way, way out of time. Those, I noted you, sir, but you can see. I like what you did though, you saved us. But if there's any further, just give to the, to the staff your further contribution. I think I must explain one important thing. In my previous life, I, the life where if I decide, I make an appointment for a meeting, I wake up, I go to the meeting, I run the meeting up to my satisfaction. Then I arrive in another life where if I want to go somewhere to do my work, I must put in application. Someone must look at the application, approve the application, give me time, give everything. That's unfortunately the life of a parliamentarian. You don't have time or decisions of your own. Everything is determined by the rules of parliament. Including when you meet, I always tell people, say, go to Cape Town, we are going to, I can tell you now, sitting here, parliament sits, if, in maximum, four times a week. The House itself, it will be Tuesday afternoon, it will be Wednesday afternoon, it's lucky, it will be Thursday afternoon, Friday is lucky if it sits on Friday. It means, I always say, before, there's someone who said here, we, parliament, unfortunately, I can't answer that part, that we no longer have a home, disaster happened. But it means when you go there, you stay only for three days activities that are serious. Now, a committee of parliament has got a time allocated to it and once you go beyond that time, you have to face the consequences. Now, we have been treated very well here and I appreciate that. Let's not try then and spoil it at the end. One of the things maybe we should state, we are a committee of parliament, of the National Assembly. We are not the National Assembly. So when we do public hearings, with all due respect, we treat people the same. But if it was the speaker, the speaker would have come and recognized people according to their institutions that they represent. So please don't feel offended, we respect traditional leadership. Let me just say straight. In fact, we respect every person on the responsibility given. But unfortunately, from where we are as a committee, we can't be seen to be treating one person better to the other because then they will stand up tomorrow and say, but we're not treated equally by the same parliament, but it says all our views are the same, they will recognize them. So if traditionally does get offended that we did not recognize them, unfortunately, it is not the case. Now, the reason I was saying they must stay there is that every person in the meeting will have to raise a hand, be pointed and then given an opportunity to speak. Or come and indicate when we start. For reasons, I know you explained yourself. I should not have given you, if I had known, I should not have given you the first bite because people who respect you, even if they have their own views, they will start to, we did this thing even yesterday, we realized there was a speaker of the municipality. We said, no, he will speak like anyone, but he's not gonna speak first. So that people, even councillors that are present, can feel free to express themselves because in most cases, people will start to listen first, oh, the mayor said this. But we don't recognize the mayor as a mayor. He's not gonna welcome us, he's not gonna, because we, you are all invited in the same capacity. But allow me, so that we end things well, allow me the three, only the three, because I suspect there was a misunderstanding. Please don't disappoint me. I've explained how committee works, even, that's why I was trying to say this thing. I serve and I'm a traditional leader myself in the rural areas. I know I can't just go calm cool and say what I want to say. Even if I'm a member of parliament, I can't come there and say, as you speak, I'm here as a member of, no, I must be treated as, like a subject, like anyone. And I must respect the chief who's given a responsibility. If it's a headman, I must respect the headman because there are rules that apply in traditional leadership, unlike us, so I must respect those things. So that was the only thing, good people. Fortunately, you can only blame me if I've known you. I will try and give you three minutes each. Three minutes each, so that we don't go here with hard hearts. But please, take it, good people, I explained before first, so that you don't say I gave a special treatment. I'm doing it out of respect, just three minutes. The only thing I was saying to them is to move to the chairs when from a chairperson, I've not recognized them. I don't have a problem, allow me just to give them the opportunity. One, two, three, the last one will be Omamala.
Porte col observe and thank you very much for your kindness, allowing us, the states, to speak on behalf of the Koi, Koi, Kona people of Southern Africa. I'm Haup, and the chief Bratumahos, from Ingo tribe in Jansville. We will be known as Kwesi municipality. I'm here standing on behalf, in the capacity, as the chief of the Inkoar in Kwesi. I'm a custodian, which I preserve Mother Earth. Usually because we are children of the soil and we have all respect when it comes to Mother Earth because Mother Earth is whom, is whom we provide for us. And some of us don't recognize that, some of us don't realize that. If Mother Earth wasn't there, you wouldn't be here as human beings. But it seems to me that we deliberately or maybe unconsciously, for whatever, that Mother Earth is provider, why we can eat, why we can drink. I was to know this above because I received it late on my WhatsApp. But the impact of this exploration that will take place, I certainly believe when years to come, it's gonna have an impact on the children that come. If you look at the nature of how it's gonna take place, now, I started, I've been at high school in the seventies and I started, I've done geography reform graduate. It's now, it's in the seven, I'll be ten. There are certain layers at Mother Earth and there are ground water beneath that layers of ground earth. And the chemicals that have been pumped into Mother Earth, it definitely could infect Mother Earth. I have a case study, which I will let before you. About 20 years, it's been five years ago, something happened in Apurdien. And what happened, all this came up, all came up in Kliplaat. Where I'm also from. What happened, it affected vegetation of that area. Kliplaat is now a desert. The animals suffered, the water, the water used to be sweet, but now we have depend on borehold, simply because we have raped Mother Earth because of our greed, short-term greed. Thank you.
Okay, I left it here because I only wanted to speak one minute. I want to greet the chairperson, the officials of the government, the leaders, cultural leaders and the traditional leaders, the traditional leaders. And I want to thank you, Mr. Chairperson, for allowing us to address you. We appreciate that. My name is Thomas Augustus. I am the chairperson of the Eastern Cape of the Koi and San Cultural Heritage Council and I represent the Koi community, the Koi and San community. We all know that the Koi and the San were the first people here in this country, but I don't want to elaborate on that. What I want to say is that we are the custodians of this beautiful land of ours and its resources. Yeah, now, I just want to talk about the pros and the cons of fracking. Yes, there are pros. Work will be created, employment, we will have clean gas and there are other pro things that goes with fracking. But there are also the cons, the negative things that fracking will bring. Firstly, it will contaminate our water resources. Secondly, there will be pollution, not only air pollution, there will also be a water pollution. These are the cons and we, we don't want the Karu to die and become a desert at the end of the day. That is why this lady, the last lady that was sitting in the queue here, she covered what I wanted to say. But I finally want to say that we mustn't allow fracking to be done in the Karu. Thank you very much.
Ik het een groot stem, ik het een bijjaarderstem.
Got a very loud voice.
Kijtjes. Goeiemiddag. Wat zei ik? Malweni en ja, bij je dank.
Good afternoon and thank you very much.
Everybody.
Thank you to everyone.
Ik wil mij dank uitspreken aan die voorzitter.
I would like to thank the chair of this committee.
Ons was niet ver on de stel om ien kan te wies. Ons missen eigenlijk dus aan ons mensen die in die queue geweest, in die reeg geweest.
We were supposed to be in the queue, we weren't supposed to be separate.
Ik moet nog verskronding vragen, ik heb niet mijzelf voorgesteld.
I would like to apologize, I didn't present myself or introduce myself.
Ik is Goos Margaret Kutsier.
I am Goos Margaret Kutsier. I am Gaas Margaret Gutsier.
Van de Inqwa stam, senior chief van de Inqwa stam.
I'm the senior chief from the Inqwa tribe.
Kokamastriek maar Baviansburg.
It falls under the Kokama region, but includes the Bavians.
En die jale orgiografische stamgebied van de Inqwa stam. Van die groot kweina nazi van Zuid-Afrika.
This includes the whole of the area of the very, very beginning geographical area of the Inqwa tribe.
Ik wil niet te lang praten van bije van ons vorgesprekers, het punten geraakt waar oor ik zou praten.
I don't want to speak too, speak too long because some of the points I wanted to discuss has already been addressed.
Ik wilde ook noemen dat ik voor de kaderplas een lid is van Greenpeace Africa.
I would like to mention the fact that for more than a decade, I've been a member of Greenpeace.
Africa.
Africa.
Afrika? Missie ons is, we are Africans, all of us. And we want, supposed to be one, not supposed to be, we are one great African family. With respect and peace in my heart. Ik heb vele werksbankels bij gewoon rondom, eh, wat zei ons? Fracking, ik ga nou sommige fracking.
I've attended a lot of...
Rotzbraking.
I've attended many, many workshops around the issue of fracking.
En wanneer ik voor middag hier staan, dan staan ik met een besorgde hart en zin.
I am standing here this afternoon with a great concern in my heart and in my soul.
Om dat fracking of, om dat rotzbraking, ik wou ons Afrikanse mensen weer wat is fracking. Dat is rotse wat diep onder die skoot van Neder-Aarde gebrik wordt. En, en, en toxise chemikalie wordt daar een ge, 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 geboender. Wat ons, die skoot van Neder-Aarde wat ons voorzien er is.
I hope that the people here will understand the word, the beautiful Afrikaans word rotzbraking. The Afrikaans for fracking. And what does it mean, the breaking of rocks? And it's the breaking of those rocks deep in inside Mother Earth, Earth. And that is Mother Earth that is sustaining us.
Ik heb ook gesproken aan die chemikalie die dit genoemd.
Thank you. And what will happen, the result of fracking? With, with the breaking of rocks so deep under the surface of the earth, it will cause toxic chemicals to be released.
Onz het reeds een voorbeeld beantwoord bij een werksbankel.
We've had an example that, that we were looking at already at one of the workshops.
En ons het duidelijke effect in, in die Abedeen en vooral Kliplaat en Kwezi gebieden.
And we have seen the impact and the negative results of these exercises in areas like Abedeen, Kliplaat, and Kwezi.
Meneer die voorzitter en radst leder van die parlement.
Chair and the members of the committee and this parliament.
Dat spijt mij, maar ik heb mia anarchieze als eerste en jemse nazi leer van Zuid-Afrika.
I am sorry, but I, I have no other choice. As the representative of the first, very first nation of this area of this country.
Ondersee, stop die fracking proces.
I am saying, stop the fracking process. Hold the, the process.
Niet omdat ik negatief wel is of, of maar omdat ik weet wat die langdurige effect zal zijn. Onze generaties wat kom zal niet een gezonde leefstijl na fracking ooit kan hebben.
I am not saying this in order to be negative. But I am saying this with the view of the, the future generations to come. And if we allow fracking, they will not have the life they are supposed to have.
Hier in die omgeving zoals uw reeds gewerkt is reeds waterproblemen, waterkwesties wat nu op bewerlijk opgelost worden.
You've already heard about the issue of water, water challenges in this area, which are not being resolved.
Mijn laatste punt is dat hier die rotzbraking ook een effect in die Bavians kloof vallei, waar vele watertafels is wat zo gezond is, ook geafekteerd zal worden. En die Bavians kloof is klompijare geleden als internationale herdheidsscheid verklaren.
My last point entails this, that fracking will also have a very negative impact on the Bavians kloof. We know that in that area, as, as currently, the water tables, there, there, there are beautiful, healthy water tables, but the impact on those will, will be detrimental.
Ik zei baie, baie dankje voor julle om ons gemeenschappen bewuster maak van hieri proces.
I am thanking you for the fact that you've come here to sensitize the community about these issues.
Mag onze twee kwaad, het betekent ons almachtige God.
May our almighty God.
Voor, voor die jale regering van Zuid-Afrika een open waren geven wat dit gaan betekenen.
May this almighty God, our almighty God, give a revelation to the government, the whole of government, to, so that they can have the wisdom to understand what this will entail.
Daar is genoeg garbage en, en, en zo'n kracht wat ons zo'n panele als alternatieve kan doen.
There is already enough garbage around as well as some power that can be used as an alternative.
Ik dank i en voor spoedige werkvoering.
I thank you and I wish you well with your work ahead.
Now you can clap hands for yourselves. You see, when, when you go, there's one thing, one thing we must appreciate, is that you don't go, you can see, you are not ticking boxes. You didn't have to say things that require our own approval here. You express your views. I thought I heard the old lady there talking about scarpe, I thought there is a scarpe coming. But Africans is difficult, you give your own interpretation. Once there is something says scarpe, you then look for a sheep. But on a serious note, look, good people, I'm not responding to your inputs. It will be disingenuous and wrong of me. But I want you to relax, so that you don't finish your energies when there is something coming. I know for instance, yeah, and there is a court case, there are court cases in fact, challenges, we are not coming for shale gas. We are coming for amendments on an act of 2001. It cut across everyone, whether you are in any corner of this country. The act is being amended. The processes of looking for gas are separate. Let's make an example. The normal, I don't know whether that's what the law directs or whatever. It would mean the department will have to come here and call you, I'm making an example, don't say I said. It will have to call you here. It then say, this is the process that is starting. You then input on that process because that one is directly on you. Because it af, it's gonna affect you because they say, we are gonna do shale gas here. They are not saying we'll do shale gas in, 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 in Pumalanga or in Pob. They say, not just within the whole Eastern Cape, they say here. Then, that's why you must be ready. So that we don't mix just because there is something they say, u toe, u toe chaku no kwaadje, u velo kamo, u kamo, u busu chaku kamo. No. So relax, that one is not, is not this committee. If this committee takes a decision to come and hear and do public hearings or oversight, whatever it seeks to do on shale gas exploration, it will come specifically for that and say, today, we want to hear your views on shale gas exploration. They will have to take the decision themselves as a committee. I only chair. You can speak, you can speak. When they take a decision, I summarize, is this what you say? When they agree, if they don't agree, they vote. But even that one, it is subject to approval in the parliamentary program, whether you come in there. So I, I don't understand, but I can't take away all what you have said. It's gonna be the report. How it's gonna be processed, that's something else. Now, I, I, I want then to say in closing, thank you very much. All what I can say, in some areas, you know, when people say you are bringing a project, in some areas, they then start to say, please bring in the project, but you must make sure that as local people who are the first one to benefit and therefore make it a point that the earthmoving equipment is brought out from us. No. A committee of parliament can't bring a project, even if it likes to. We can't. A committee of parliament can make it a point exercising this oversight role over the responsible department, that what that department does is necessary and correct. But we can't come here, any person who come here saying is representing a committee, even if I'm not there, you must tell them since when a committee can bring a project. Even if I come here myself, going with a service provider, you must ask me, are you the chairperson of this service provider or the chairperson of the committee? So you can't, maybe the minister can draw the distinction, the minister can. That is the only difference. Unfortunately, those are the rules, they allow the department to do so. But thank you very much with your, with your input. I'm sure some of you will be available to represent us when parliament calls us to reprimand us for what we did. But we think we were compelled by circumstances to do so. Thank you very much. Thank you with the last word, I nearly said amen, you left the podium without saying amen. Amen, Mark, glenn out. We need the word of God regardless of your faith. And we appreciate the fact that you closed it on that remark. May we have safe journey, all of us wherever we go, thank you very much.